Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen for February 11, 2025. The time now is 7:00 P.M.
And I also like to call to order the Board of Finance's special meeting, um, February 11th. Please join for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the land, under the banner of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just.
All right, there we go. We're here for presentations. We see we have the Park and Rec, Lou and, um, the sidekick here, you know, nice glasses. Where'd you get them?
Heard of lens.com?
You know what? It's called Park and Rec. We're fun.
That's the new logo. Yeah, that's the first thing I'm here on behalf of my fellow commission members. My name is Lou Volenti. I'm the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission. I see there's some new members of the Board of Finance. And those new members probably don't know what we all went through to, uh, to sort of bring the Parks and Recreation budget, you know, into line and have it all make sense. And none of that would have been possible without the terrific cooperation that we got from both Board of Selectmen, led by Dan and the Board of Finance led by Nick, and we are very grateful for that. Um, we also want to thank you guys for the adjustments. Part of that whole process of deciding what should be in what bucket, what should, what should be somebody else's responsibility, did require an adjustment to be made in the last fiscal year, and, uh, that was greatly appreciated, and it works out going forward. And last but not least, the investment that the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen have made in our Parks and Recreation. The lights for the new fields, the, uh, tennis courts, and, um, the investment in what we think is going to be a tremendous revitalization of our old parks. So we thank you guys all for that. So in part for gratitude for all of that, and for your support, the Commission, Rachel, first staff, um, have worked hard to present what we think is going to be a responsible and taxpayer-friendly budget for the next fiscal year. And with that, I am done. And now it's, uh, Rachel taking over.
Hello. Um, I know there are a couple of new faces, but I did meet you at a couple of meetings I was at. Um, just to kind of give you an extremely broad view of Park and Rec, we run all the programs for preschool, for adults, um, year-round, our summer camps, before and after care program, our maintenance staff maintains all the athletic fields, and also, um, numerous town buildings, kind of depending on the season, like we shovel here, we shovel the library, things like that. Um, extremely broad view of what we do. Um, this budget, we've tried to aim to keep things as close to status quo as possible. We think these numbers that we're providing are going to help us maintain the current level of service effectively. Um, we also are still in the process, even in year two of my tenure, of continuing to refine the budget, working on the past issues that we had, um, two years ago when I first took over, and you guys were able to make that adjustment for us. Um, our biggest changes are, we tried to clean up our expense line. Our expense line had salaries within there. Um, our specialized camp staff, our program supervisor, night staff, so what we've done, and that's why you see such a large jump into our salary line. You'll also notice there is a decrease in our pro- in our program expense line because we put all of salaries in the salaries, just to sort of try to make it clear where the money's going and where we're taking it out of versus having in a program line, it just made sense. They're salaries. They should be in the salary line. We've also done the, what we did last year, the same thing. We have a minimum wage line because we don't know what the minimum wage will increase will be in January 2026. Um, in 23, 24, it was a 4.6 increase. Um, this past January, it was a 4.2 increase. So we kind of just made a number of, we're counting hopefully for a smaller increase, and we're taking a calculated risk on that assumption that inflation will continue to decline. Um, but we kind of have to take that into account because we just don't know what it is, and I don't think they announced it till August of this year, what it will be. So we just kind of assume what it will be. Um, other than that, we've, I've really tried to keep things kind of the same. Um, you know, certain supplies have gone up. We've done a lot more training with our summer camp staff, so those kind of things have gone up. We've done, we do more medical admin training, more first aid CPR training, EpiPen training. Uh, we just try to have more individuals at our camps certified for that and in our programs. If we didn't feel we needed to change things, we did it. Uh, so I'm trying to keep this as short and sweet as possible. So if you have questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Or if you feel like I've not covered something, please ask.
The total increase this year is 2.67.
Yes.
Very responsible. I appreciate the guys' work. I guess my only question would be mid-stream, you know, I know a lot of your programs generate revenue. If something comes up, you could always come back if there's a new program. Or you have that built in?
We do have, we have it built in. Uh, we, for this one, we have about 44,000 for new programs.
Right.
Um, because we do get a lot of interest, especially school-wise. We get a lot of teachers that want to run after-school, before-care, or before-school programs. So we like to give them that kind of lea- that, that leeway to do that. Um, also, when the new tennis courts are, are completed, um, we'll have actual built-in pickleball lines, um, not pickleball courts. So we know we have instructors that want to teach pickleball. So having just that little buffer on the expense side to bring in that income, it gives us a, a good amount of leeway.
Well, I appreciate you guys.
I have one quick question. At 5206, you carried the same number for last year and this year, and it's for dumpsters? What are the dumpsters for?
Oh, the dumpsters, uh, Bennett gets a dumpster, McCowherd gets a dumpster.
Except just weekly garbage pickups?
Yep. And I kept that, um, flat because the town just had a bid out to, um, they keep changing their name. It's not Oak Ridge anymore, whatever they are.
Interstate or something, I believe.
So they, they, they got a really good deal, so I decided that I can keep that number as is.
Take the cable company to go up next year, don't worry about it.
And any extras that we do, um, like if, if BMX or baseball or soccer asks for extra cleanings, dumpings, or extra dumpsters, they reimburse us for that.
Okay, great. Does anybody else have anything?
With the, um, for and after care, how many kids, uh, you think are gonna increase? Or how many kids increased that program?
So our before and after care program right now has, we're making more money, but we have less kids because, um, for the, the newer members on, on the Board of Finance, when we took the program over about seven years ago, um, there was, I'm not sure how it happened, there was an agreement with Board of Ed that the teachers paid less or paid nothing, depending on their usage. After my first year, this is the first year where that was taken out. So we have a lot of room. Uh, Johnson has the most kids, but we take 35 to 40 in before and after at each school, depending on which school. Johnson takes it, tends to take more because they're older, so they take a little less care. We don't have to have as many staff for them because they, you know, like to be on their, their chrome boats and, and go outside and play. So that program's actually doing very well this year, even though the numbers are not the same as last year because every person in the program is a paying participant.
Anybody else on our side?
Seven questions.
Yes.
Um, do you like put it out to different trash companies or do you just stay with who you're with?
That's the town.
The town did it. We had an open bid process, and that was the lowest bid, was Interstate or Oak Ridge at the time.
Whatever they were. They'll change names again.
Because I just, I just left them for our broken trash and saved $100.
Yeah, so we did, we combined the bid moment with the Board of Ed to get better even pricing. The town side dropped, theirs actually went up, so.
And it was still the lowest bid?
Yes. And ours dropped a lot. I was, when I got it, I said, that can't be right.
I believe, uh, Brian had another question. Did you raise your hand? No?
Rich?
No.
Okay, I, I first also commend you guys. Great job on the budget. I know it's been a long time coming. Good job.
Well, thank you guys.
And also, you know, if I could just chime in. It's, it's a, obviously an asset to have, to take, you know, to have Park and Rec in our town, and we appreciate all the efforts. And we see the guys out working, and we see the different improvements, and, and makes us proud of our town. So thank you for your work. Thank you. Thank you. And you guys do have the best pres- best presentation so far tonight.
I said I'm either gonna start it off really well.
I see Beavels here, so.
This is gonna be pretty good. Do we want to talk?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
The departments that have capital requests, do we want to talk about them? Because I think the only thing that capitalized that we had discussed in possibly doing the roof for the Board of Ed as part of the budget referendum, right? But we should probably quickly go through their capital requests, I mean, that's capital request, saying what the C and R capacity is.
Okay.
So they're just standalone.
It's not a big list.
That's not a big list?
So the darker one that only has Park and Rec on it is the one that she's working on because she gave it to me.
I gave you a separate one, Nick. That's actually right.
Oh, good. Well, that's the one I wanted. That's right.
No, I gave it, I'm pretty sure, no.
This one.
Oh, I'm sorry. No.
Sorry.
Did I get one?
Uh, I.
I better have it.
I put it on your side.
You need to share with me.
Cynthia got one. Um, okay, so the vacuum flushing system, I put it on there, but what I'm trying to do is we do have a, a large piece of machinery that we are trying to see if someone will buy or trade so that I don't have to ask for it, but it pretty much goes on our mowers, and it's an automatic dump for the leaves instead of the guys having to get off, take the thing off, dump the leaves, put it back on.
But for the bigger toros, the bigger?
Actually for the, either the bench racks or the X marks.
Okay, so you're looking for a dollar amount, then you'll make a decision.
Yes, and I'm trying to get rid of one of the, our pieces of equipment that we really don't use. Um, I just can't get a good price for it yet.
Okay.
Um, the Sand Pro, the Sand Pro is the machine that we use to groom all of the ballfields.
And we didn't just buy that, right?
No, 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 we bought a UTV. So we do have two of them. One is actually getting a lot of engine work done right now. Um, so we're hoping that we can get a lot of more life out of it, but it's on there because it's actually a machine that if for some reason we do lose one, they're very hard, it's very hard for us to maintain all the fields with just one machine, especially on weekends if we've got multiple tournaments going on and, and we have to be on two different sites, um, to maintain fields. Halliford could just be helpful for the guys to move heavy, heavy deliveries to the appropriate places.
Goes on a skid steer or something?
Yes, it'll, it'll go on our tractor.
Yep, okay.
Um, Salter, you know, it would be great. It'd be something that we could add on to the UTV that the Board of Finance did approve of about a month ago, um, for us. So it'd be a great option to have. Um, our 2015 green pickup truck, it does only have 57,000 miles, but the A.C. doesn't work, only the back windows go down. Um, it is starting to rust.
It's the idle power, we get it, yep.
But we al- we also are getting the old PD, uh, animal control truck, but that's just not meant to trailer a lot of our heavier equipment in the end. But the, the town garage is going to try to give it a little more life. The large mower, it's, it's on there just in case. Um, utility trailer, you know, with the, the, the beatings that some of our trailers take, just sometimes if something is just unfixable and trust us, our, our guys try to put everything back together as best they can. If, if we can get more life out of it, we do. But that's really it. I tried to be realistic in the sense of there might be some things that we just can't live without if they go away. And then moving forward to the other years.
Do you have a dump trailer also in the bottom?
Wishless, wish, oh, yes.
Yeah.
Because we did replace the other dump trailer about five years ago.
Okay. Quick question for you. The large mower, that's the second of two you have, right? One which, one we replaced.
No, we did not.
We did not do, we didn't do it.
We got.
Oh, you know, but we have an act.
Oh!
Yeah, we do it.
Gee, why didn't you?
They just spent money.
But we also are looking for the mowers. We are looking to, to be able to purchase things closer in-house. Um, I'm working with a company, MCE, out of New Milford, because they do service that in New Milford versus having us to get the equipment out to anybody.
Right. Right, and you made a comment about the pickup truck, uh, versus the animal control pickup truck, and that the town garage is nursing it back to health. Which one? The old one or the new one?
The green truck. They're gonna see, they're gonna see if they can get the A.C. to work. You know, not that A.C. isn't necessary, but the windows don't go down.
Yeah.
It gets really hot in there in the summer, and that's usually the vehicle that our part-time timers are in going place to place to place and, you know.
Will that get less work because you have the UTV when they're in the school complex, right? Because the UTV will only go.
No, the green one, the green truck usually if they're coming down here, going out to Hollyville, that area.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
All right, we have next is, uh, the Red Shore Voters. Tim and Wendy.
Who are your registrar voters?
Tim Bevel.
I see no Capitol for these guys, so listen.
Always.
Forget that already, I guess, the Secretary of State.
So, yeah, so, uh, yeah, thanks. So thanks for going, uh, much more busy in the Red Shore Voters Office now that we've got early voting. Uh, it's, last year we had a huge increase in our budget, not only because of early voting, but also because it was a presidential cycle. This year we're coming in with a, oh, and by the way, we're anticipating that maybe we'll have, uh, about a five or six percent surplus at the end of the year. But part of that is, um, it would have only been a one and a half percent surplus, but we got an unexpected grant of $5,600 for early voting. It didn't, early voting costs a lot more than that, but it's the little bit that the, the state sent down to us. But anyway, uh, I, I think the new format is working out great. Uh, Brad, thank you for that. I think it's much more understandable for the boards and, and for us trying to put it together. But anyway, every year we budget for three election events. A primary, a general election, and a budget referendum. And that's it. If we have more than one budget referendum, well, that's not budgeted for, but we still try to kind of live within that, that amount. Last year, when we were trying to put together the fiscal year 2025 budget, we had to estimate the cost for early voting, and we had never done it before. We, the state hadn't come up with what we were going to be required to do. The only thing that we knew is how many days it was going to be. 14 days for elections and seven days for primaries. Unfortunately, the state legislature applies it to municipal elections as well. And there have been times when we've had primaries for Board of Finance, for Police Commission. So we could be required to have seven days of early voting for a minor board. You know, what, like, alternate could come in for it. Don't count on it, but it's, it's a possibility. We're hoping that the state legislature will correct that. Uh, they're going to be making some other changes, but, uh, we can't really budget on what we think might happen up at, at the Capitol. So we're assuming that we don't get any grants. The Secretary of State has advised us that there probably won't be any grants. I thought I heard something on TV last night that it was going to be, that Lamont cut it by 50%. But I don't know whether that was money that was going to be shared with the towns or whether that was just the amount that was going to be spent up in the Secretary's State's office, so.
Yeah, so Lamont in his budget does propose cutting the funding 50%, but the article I read about it doesn't go into if that means our part, the state's part, all of it.
And even if it was 50%.
It's like 2,600.
We only got 5,600 anyway, so it's, it's really negligible. But, I mean, the good news is we're requesting 1,000, 146,835, which is 6% less than the current year. And then under election expense, we're requesting 79,255, and that includes wages for poll workers, uh, for the election, primary and referendum, for the voting days, as well as 21 days of early voting. Tabular maintenance, contracts, accessible voting system, uh, programming that system, moderator training, election supplies, shipping and mileage expenses. And overall, the, the request in for election, uh, expenses is a decrease of $11,415 this year. And again, it's, it's mainly because of the, the difference between a municipal cycle and a presidential cycle. Um, and then this includes nearly $35,000 in early voting costs. If there is no primary this year for the municipal cycle, the money gets saved. But if we save that money and turns out there's a second budget referendum, well, that's where that money will go. So it's, it's a little plunging. Um, but, you know, for the past 10 years, we've always been very frugal. We've always figured out ways to, to run elections for less. Although there are some changes coming down the road that will kind of undermine our ability to do things for less. For example, we're getting in this budget, we were saying we're getting 16 new tabulators. Now it is 14, which I like less equipment anyway, less to store, less to maintain. Speaking of which, um, you can take $700 off our budget, bottom line, uh, or more importantly, in, uh, election expense, because the election expense includes $350 per tabular, or a mark, a maintenance agreement. And, um, but since they're giving us two fewer tabulators, then we're going to save $700 there. So that's something that you can take care of right away. Overall, for office expenses, we have, um, $7,580 for office expenses, and that includes supplies, postage, registrar, training. And the postage is, a big part of it is for doing our annual canvas. For example, this year for the annual canvas, which we do in-house, we don't do it out to a contractor, uh, we'll be reaching out to every single voter who didn't vote in the presidential election. If you didn't go in the presidential election, we suspect that maybe you don't live. So that's, that's who we'll be doing. But as we did four years ago, a lot of people respond and say, no, I'm still here. I just didn't vote. So, uh, we'll see. And overall, this request is, uh, $1,050 less than the current budget. In salaries, uh, section 10-9 of the charter requires the Board of Finance to set the annual salaries of the registrars. And for 2026, we're requesting consideration of a $1,000 annual increase, uh, for each of the registrars. That would make the, the total base salary 23,000. The deputies' salaries are now set by the first lady. And then I think, oh, and, and one of the other savings under, uh, the office expenses is that, uh, in 2025, Wendy completed her certification as a registrar of voters. So that's $1,000 less in training needs. We still need ongoing continuing education, and that's done at the Roback conferences. But anyway, you have any questions?
Quick question. The, uh, are we using the same company for the ballot program you asked before? Because I know there are only two companies certified out there, but the new tabulators have like one company that does it, right?
Well, the, the equipment itself is a new company.
Okay.
And it wasn't quite the lowest bidder. It was whatever process, RFP process, the state did. And they will be, they're actually, on Thursday, they're picking up our old equipment, including the ballot boxes, and they're saying they're going to recycle it.
So 500 is still good? I mean, that's still a good estimate for those guys, the new company?
Oh.
Do the programming on the new ballot?
Um, actually, that, that programming is for the ABS system. That's.
Okay.
So the, the other, actually, that gets paid out of, um, Lisa's budget. So she pays for the ballots and those memory cards. Although, except we don't really know what's going on with memory cards because the new machines don't have memory cards. They're gonna, the, the data will come in through the internet, maybe by email.
It's gotta be fine, then.
And it's, and then, and then it'll be locked down. We'll download it onto a, a thumb drive, and then plug them into all the tabulators and get the ballots loaded in. And then after that, we test them.
The voting process itself is not through the internet. Just, just the data.
The data to set up.
Program the tabulator, but then we test to make sure that. Right, the math is, okay.
Anybody have questions? I'm sorry, Lou. What are the hours of the mission?
Well, we, um, we are salaried employees, which means we have to work the number of hours necessary to get the job done. Last year I logged 860 hours, so that's point six full-time equivalent, something like that. And I, and it's not like we're paid by the hour. It's just that in my prior job, I used to keep track of my hours for billable hours for various projects. So I just continued doing it here and, so, yeah. But it's, it's a lot more than the previous year. So first couple of years on the job, we were doing maybe 750 hours a year. And I think, then as we learned the job, we were able to do it in about 550 hours per year. Presidential year is always more. But now with early voting, it's, um, it's a lot.
Anybody else?
Rich, you're good. All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Here's the best one of the night, Lisa. This is gonna be the best one.
Oh, no, they. Oh, I thought I had an extra two minutes.
Do you need a couple of extra minutes?
No, I, um, put this together actually about an hour ago. That's why I'm giving it out now.
I love being prepared.
Yeah, well, it's, it's very informative. Um, and it doesn't lead my presentation. It's something that I think needs to be considered. It is, I am the lowest-paid Fairfield County Town Clerk and the lowest-paid department head here in the building. And I've compiled, um, two charts. They'll show you, um, the breakdowns. And I also included a list of my duties under statutory and charter, um, requirements. So it's just something for you to consider. It is not my first lead going into this, and you're going to tell me this is the worst budget presentation.
I've never gotten a raise. I haven't asked for either.
Yeah, okay. So honestly, it didn't even kind of hit me until about three days ago. So I said, you know what? Let me get it together, see where I'm at. Didn't even realize it because I love the job. I love what I do. And, um, you know, now's the time. So, um, this year, um, we had a marked increase in revenue the first half of the fiscal year. Um, that's attributed to, um, conveyance and, and sales of real estate. We had a couple of really big sales in town up in, uh, Francis J. Clark Circle and Francis J. Clark, um, industrial park. We had, um, the Big Y, um, complex cell, you know, all that contributes to conveyance taxes. So that was an increase in funding there. Any increase in expenditures funded by the revenue I generate, I have no impact on the mill rate. So I'm pretty much, I operate for free. We usually give more than we ask for, and we contribute to lowering the taxes in my office because we're a revenue generating office. We have a new, um, state, uh, mandate, which is going to be no excuse absentee voting, um, that passed legislature. Actually, it's in legislature right now. They're coming up with, it passed the constitutional question on the ballot last, um, this last election. So that's going to increase, um, the responsibilities in the town clerk's office. Uh, Secretary of State, I'm Fairfield County Vice President for, of the Town Clerks Association. If anybody doesn't know that, I have direct, um, correlation with the Secretary of State's office and the leadership of the state at Connecticut Town Clerks Association. So I've been, um, in meetings and with the Secretary of State, and they're anticipating that with the no excuse absentee voting, this year we could expect to have 60% of the vote come through my office with, um, mail-in voting. So that's basically where we're at there. That's why I did not change the, um, the line item for elections. I kept it at that, the same rate as last year. Last year was the presidential election, and I wound up giving back. Do you know that, how much I gave back on that? Because I anticipated having to have more help than we actually needed. So I budgeted for that and wound up giving back a chunk.
While we're waiting for Brad, how many ballots did you collect, um, for that election, for the presidential election?
For this past presidential election, we didn't know what to expect.
How many did you get at the end of the day?
We had about, I think it was 700. So, um, We had about, I think it was seven hundred. So approximately seven hundred ballots. We're, in twenty twenty, we did four thousand. So with a presidential election, normally, we're, you know, without this early voting.
Oh, that's what changed it.
Yeah. So with the early voting, it cut down on what I needed in terms of extra help. We were able to manage it with two, two part-timers that helped out. So.
So in twenty twenty four, the town clerk's office returned or came under budget eighteen thousand dollars. Forty-eight hundred of it was salary line, which Lisa doesn't control, but it's, so the parts that Lisa controls, it was just over thirteen thousand dollars.
That we gave back, yeah. So and that was, you know, I didn't need the help for the voting for this past past election, which I didn't know how it was gonna work. So.
Because more people did in person because they had.
Right, and it cut down. So two weeks in with the, when the early voting started, it it cut down on the the need for absentee balloting because they were here. They'd just come right down here and vote, which was a huge success. With this, it's in, it's being discussed right now at the state legislator that that they're coming up with and they're pushing for it to happen this year for no excuse absentee voting. And they're still deciding what they're gonna do, whether they're gonna mail everyone an absentee ballot application like they did twenty twenty, which was a disaster for us because we were just overwhelmed. That was a, that we went from, I think it was like six hundred to four thousand ballots, and I needed a whole bunch of people for that. And they're anticipating that this is gonna be similar to that. They don't know what they're gonna do with the early voting yet because they're cutting that, they might be cutting that back. So it's it's a kind of a.
Combination between two of your.
Yeah, they're gonna do, they may, yeah, they're they're trying to figure it all out. And we're trying to push, you know, the legislators to give us a working group where we can work with them for a year and then implement it the following year, but they're pushing, they want to get it done this year. So it's really, it's still up in the air. So we don't know what we're going to do with that. So I've left that line item. I didn't change it. Because I think I'm going to, you know, I'd rather have it and need the, and have it to expend. Since I've already got it, I didn't change it. I left it alone. I didn't give it back. Land records, I increased the two thousand because at last year's budget meeting where I presented, you guys had cut the two thousand for that land records. And I did mention at the time that we were coming up for a renewal on our contract. So that is going to happen in July. So I will need that two thousand dollars back. Mileage expense, that's, you know, that's IRS, that's mini school. Land records, like I said, the two thousand. News and education, we have, there's there's the future, I'm going for better certification. So I'm studying to do that and doing a few extra classes here and there. So and then Casey's gonna be going for her certification test in June. So she'll be done with her training at that point. So next year, we will have somebody at school, hopefully have another certified town clerk. In terms of the salary, unless you have any other questions about that.
Does anybody have any questions on her budget?
The other thing was also the assistant town clerks. They need to be reconsidered as well. I know that's a contractual thing, and that's not between the unions and and HR. But the office of the town clerk, I don't feel gets the respect that it should. And I listed the statutory directions. We do basically five jobs in one. The assessor does her assessing. The tax collector takes in taxes. The town clerk works with Secretary of State, Elections Enforcement, FOI Commission, Department of Revenue, Public Administrators, Libraries and Archives, Department of Public Health, Department of Agriculture, Department of Environmental Protection. We do land records, vital records, elections, primaries and referendum campaign, finance boards and commissions, freedom of information, records management, preservation and conservation, permits, licenses to include now peddlers, but we don't do peddlers, but we do auction. Not the auction, but the liquor, the trainings, the dog licenses, and then we have other duties as well. I also included letters from my peers as a peer review from different town clerks from across the county. This is my fourth term, our first, fourth year as being the Vice President of Fairfield County. And I feel like I've done a very good job representing this county. And I was honestly shocked when I looked at the numbers because we used to be on a par with Monroe. And it's now, they've, they've realized that we're not being compensated for what the workload that we 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 handle. I've never really come at the board of finance in such a way where I've put such emphasis on my salary. And thank you last year because you did give me a cost of living increase. But as you can see, you know, I I'm the lowest-paid department head, and the land use coordinator, who is a secondary person in that office, makes quite a bit more than I do. The assistant assessor is just below me in in terms of salary. I run a department. I am the supervisor for two other people. And I'm a champion for what I do and for the residents of this town. And I just feel that that position should be brought up to a more level amount. Whether or not I'm elected, I think the position is.
Do you think it's because it's an elected position?
I think that, you know, it's the position, yes, in a way, in a way it does. But I'm also fulfilling a duty and I'm doing a job. And if you were to look at others, you know, jobs that are comparable in terms of who I work with and the state agencies, I mean, I think that it's not unreasonable for me to ask for an increase based on the comparisons with other towns and with the town department heads. So I just ask you to consider it. I appreciate you looking through this and taking it into consideration. And same goes for my assistants, you know, they are hardworking. We're here, was that my timer?
No, no, just someone else. Somebody was commenting about your.
Okay, so I would just like to have it reviewed, that's all. And I appreciate you taking the time to do that.
And your other two?
And this is.
And they're a union?
They are a union.
And you're part of what union?
CSDA. So but that, you know, I understand that's that's done outside here, but I wanted to mention it though as well. I've been here twenty-three years. And if you look at the salary for twenty-three years and the position and the work I do, I think it's kind of on the low side. So I know it's a tough year, and I I have always kept my budget tight. And I don't have any capital items, never have. So.
You pay for the new floor.
That was not my department.
Oh, I just.
Oh, by the way, the registers need new parking.
Oh, thanks for advocating for them. And you did have the best presentation right up to this pavement, you know.
Yeah.
I want to be very clear. I don't, I mean, I just.
No, no, I know. And I think this is a nice touch. I don't know what it's meant to do for us, but at the heart.
Thank you, Candy Cane. They're this year's.
So on line item fifty-one oh one salary, is that Lisa's increase and is that for what she considers needing a raise and the union?
So the union is all contractual. So that's gotta be.
Oh, I know. So that forty-five hundred, what is, what is that?
If you look at the detail on the bottom here, John. There's an elected official line that shows the seventy-six, seven oh five. Right below it is the request that Lisa's asking for. She's asking for her, the general fund portion of her salary to go up three thousand two ninety-five at least.
That was before I did my homework.
No, no, but you, but you carried a number asking us for, what was that, Brad, three thousand?
Thirty-two ninety-five, but what's the forty-five, you know, what's the rest of it?
So that's also, so that contract is up for the clerical union, but one of her employees is on steps.
Oh, okay.
So even if you're, if the contract's up and steps still go.
Okay, and that, and that, it shows that.
Got it. Correct. So the, the line is is full-time employees too. That's the union.
And the thirty-two ninety-five represented what percentage?
I didn't do a percentage.
Okay.
And that was just a number I pulled out to make it an even number. So if you feel like giving me more, that's up.
You got that part. And you took one candy cane, right?
Nick, that's part of the conversation.
Not for anything. And I'm not trying to put anybody in, but you gave the first election and quite a big increase last year. And I think to bring me up with other departments.
I get it. And and I was a big part of that because the position deserved it, you know what I mean?
Right. And then, well, I gave you the homework here.
I appreciate the backup.
All right.
How much, how much is the train station part of your salary?
That's a different job I do.
Okay, so how much, how much time do you spend with that?
I spend, I got ten, ten.
Because I think part of the time they, over the years, they use part of that salary just.
I've increased ridership, I have to say. I've been going down there personally and flagging cars without permit. And I created a thing where I put, put it on, yeah. I had a flyer that said you're in, at risk of violation of a ticket. I attached the application for the two fifty annual permit and an envelope, and I put it on their cars that they didn't have the permits. So I was helping with the the police department. We, I went by there the other day. All the perimeter, which is daily parking, is, was full. And our lot is is filling up in the middle again. And I also want to have more signs put up because I see there's some, you know, scofflaws that are parking where there's no sign for the numbered spot. I was actually able to get a car repoed out of there.
Did they pay the taxes first or no?
I contacted the leasing company because it had been there over a year, and it was a Land Rover. And come to find out, the gentleman was in jail, but he didn't pay his bill. So I helped out the leasing company. At the same time, I helped Bethel by opening up an extra spot. I am actively working on the train station. No other town clerk in the state has that position.
And there's a stipend. Is it like fifty-five hundred dollars?
It's nothing really.
What is it?
No, 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 I was just being funny. No, that, yes, absolutely.
Isn't it like fifty-five hundred or something?
I think it's like something like that. But, you know, the Parking Authority would be a lot more money.
And there's your no, I mean, I don't leave Bethel, obviously, but is there no open parking spots down there?
There are. There are open parking spaces. Yeah, it's not every day. And there are some in the center of the lot. I personally think we should increase the rate per hour for the the daily parking. It's twenty-five cents an hour. I wanted to maybe think of raising the rates for daily parking to make them want to get an annual permit, and that's, you know, two fifties in a year.
So the train station pays nine and a half percent of Lisa's salary. The amount that you see in there is the amount the general fund pays. So the train station account pays the other part.
And what is that number, five thousand?
So the gentleman pays seventy-six thousand four seventy.
That's your salary, yeah.
The train station pays just a rate thousand.
Eight thousand.
All the money that's collected at the train station has to be spent.
It's in a, it's in a fund, right?
And we put in a second kiosk and we put a shelter over the two. So to to upgrade the lot.
Yeah, I'll be the first to say Lisa's done a great job with the train station. I also told her that we should buy her a scooter so she can have her tickets.
I used to work for the Danbury Park Authority. I have experience there. So if you get me a little metering thing and a bell, I'll be fine.
You've done, you've done a good job. Good presentation.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't need to harp on the thing. I don't like to do that, but I figured now's my shot.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
You know, longest presentation of the night.
I know, right? I wanted to make Izzy wait while she's sick and home.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right. Next is one forty, tax assessor. And we're doing this via.
Zoom. Sorry about that. I wish I could be there. Thank you, board members, for allowing me to zoom this presentation. I'm sick, and I didn't think you guys wanted me in there to share all of that. My presentation, my budget is pretty flat, except that there's a, I want a need. I know we're in a time of tough budgets. And of course, you guys look at me to make the grant list increase, and I try the best I can do with being, you know, fair and equitable to our, to our taxpayers. My one thing that I do want is, it's called Near Map, and I wanted to show a presentation, but I wasn't able to do that because of being sick. It's an enhancement. It's, we carry tie and bond, which is our basic mapping. But this helps enhance by becoming more, I'm able to find buildings that maybe not had been permitted. I find a lot of barns that were not, or sheds or garages when we were doing our revaluation. My revaluation company had Near Map. So it really was a beneficial program that I got to use while they were there, here, you know, doing our revow. And that's gonna, that would increase our budget. That really would be my biggest increase. I said the assessor's office, if we wanted to, you know, talk about our hats that we wear, the assessor's office is definitely multitasked. I said we have to, we carry a lot of hats. We have to, we have to be accountants because we have to review personal property declarations. We have to review and come up with the income and expense reports that comes up with our, are one of our three ways to value properties. They're done with the income approach. So that's what we need those, and we have to look at those and dissect those. We are also, you know, we have to understand the surveying, cadastro mapping, and we have to understand how to interpret them and and to map them out. We also are paralegals. I mean, when a deed gets recorded, we're the ones who have to make sure that the deed is correct. We're the ones that go through all the, the grantor grantees, the Schedule As, the legal descriptions. That's something that our office has to, the conveyances, are they paying the right conveyances, whether it be a commercial conveyance or a residential conveyance? I always said we're also therapists because we have to deal with taxes. So we have to deal with people and being compassionate, you know, when the, when the tax bill becomes due. So that being said, getting back down to the Near Map, that would be also a benefit in helping me grow our grant list, look for things that maybe we didn't see. I found a property way back when that was on a street, and and they've done quite a bit to add to it, and I was able to build, bring that to the building department. So these things were important. That's what I, why I'm asking for that additional money for that. What else can I say?
The chair recognizes Brian down there.
Thank you. Izzy, you're saying that it shows you like if there's a shed or something like that, but does it give you the dimensions?
I can measure it all out. So it will give me up to, like, I think it's up to two hundred feet. So I can go and measure that shed two D and three D. So if we have a commercial building, I can measure how, because I need to know the height of that building. So is it twenty-four feet? Is it twelve feet? I can measure all that with that mapping. It also does twice a year. So when they do take pictures, it's twice a year. And then I could see when that shed went in or when they did this huge, you know, fire, not a fire pit, because I don't care, but if they put a huge fireplace with a patio, I can check all that and measure that out.
Any other questions, Randy?
Yeah, buddy. Izzy, you'd mentioned that they load the map twice a year. Do they use Google Maps? Is that the?
They have their own flyovers that they do, and then it would be imprinted kind of. They would use my tie and bond with that to overlay. And that's how that is done.
And is the eighty-five hundred dollars a one-time fee or are there annual license?
There's the annual licensing fees after that.
How much new property do you have to find for this system to pay for itself?
Well, we have, I mean, the grant list, of course, did go up, I went up almost one percent in our real estate. Our biggest problem this year was the motor vehicles, and that, we really didn't have any control over because that was done based on the, our, because of Hartford. And what they did was they changed our scheduling for our motor vehicles. uh, because of Hartford. And what they did was they changed our scheduling for our motor vehicles. We are now not getting any money on personal, um, trailers. We are not, they depreciated a different schedule. So, and I have that schedule at my office. So it starts at eighty five percent for a twenty twenty four. And then it goes down five percent every year to a bottom of fifteen percent or five hundred assessment. Then we take seventy percent of that. So bottom being five hundred, but then it could be eighty five percent, then times a seventy percent depreciation. Um, that really did a thirteen and a half percent decrease in our grand list this year.
Actually, that was helpful. Thank you. I, I guess where I was trying to probe a little bit is, I would imagine most of, most of us would say, look, if we can get more than eighty five hundred dollars a year in grand list in tax increases, it's even adult like me might be able to figure it out. But I wasn't sure if that's something that you think you can do perpetually. Like eighty, eighty five hundred dollars a year of grand list tax-based value increases. And if you can, I think that it's becomes a pretty simple decisioning. But do you have any thoughts on that? Like how?
I mean, always it'd be something that if we want to, I mean, I can't tell you how many times we pick up stuff, even when we're on, um, another thing is air conditioners. I can actually see an air conditioner on there. So if I had a house that was only heat only, I now add an AC system that adds three, five thousand dollars to the assessment. So those things can make a big difference.
Izzy, Izzy, what is the most common thing that you discover? Now, that, you know, obviously you get building permits and things like that, but some things may not come through. What's the most common thing you discover right now to, uh, increase the cost or addition to the grand list rather?
Uh, what do you mean by that? Like?
Well, when you discover things, that, you know, things you're looking for, whether it's an air conditioner, a deck, a garage, I mean, what's the most common thing you find now? And how do you find it?
Um, that's where I just had a two, two-week trial with, um, Near Map. And also understand Near Maps helps all departments do. I mean, it's going to help the building department. It's going to help, help zoning because they can see their setbacks. Um, so if we're the property, you know, I mean, the maps are not perfect, but at least it can give them a good idea on the property line setbacks. It would help, um, I know I can see every, um, um, curtain drain. I could see, you know, manhole covers. So I would think this would, when we say the eighty five hundred, it's everybody who has a town hall email gets that, can use that system. So it could pick up all the sheds. I find out how many sheds that adds money. Um, our patios, our decking, um, our unpermitted additions. You know, I can even see, um, if I looked at an open frame porch, I can see if it's been enclosed. And then we, that would prompt us to go out there and take a look and maybe make it an enclosed porch instead of, or living area instead of, um, and then we contact the building department, make sure they're doing what they should as well.
Okay. Thank you, Izzy. Brian?
I'm just gonna disagree with my esteemed colleague, Bob Manfreda. I might not be as, as supportive as yours. You know, I do believe that people are entitled to a certain amount of expectation of privacy. And, you know, if someone, I'm not condoning people not pulling permits because, you know, I pull permits on everything in my business, you know? But if someone puts a fence up around their property, they have a certain expectation of privacy. There's case law that supports that. And I don't know if I would support. You know, it, it, it's kind of like, where is that? Like we talked about speed radars that aren't manned by police officers. It's, wait a minute, where does it, where does it end? So I, I don't know personally whether I would be sold on something like this. And, and that's my reason.
Yeah. And we'll, and we'll go forward, and we'll go forward to that deliberation phase, obviously.
Um, Brian, the other day we had somebody, and thank God I got the two-week trial right now. We had somebody who had a motor home on his property. Um, and he said it wasn't that motor home. Well, I was able to look at the mere back and go back two years and that, that motor home was there. So that's where it's beneficial. I cannot see him, if they're sunbathing on the back porch, I cannot see you.
Are there, are there any other questions for Izzy? Izzy, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terrific.
Thank you very much.
Keep your germs home.
I'll try.
All right. Thank you. Uh, one fifty.
Or Nick, where we going?
Tax cut, oh, sorry.
As a, if any administrators already presented, don't feel like you have to stay. You're not funding this if you.
Except for Lisa.
No, except for Lisa.
She took up a lot of my time.
I'm here to support my fellow.
Yeah.
And then she's out of here.
And she's out of here.
She's going to lick her throat.
My, my end of the hallway.
I agree. I was just trying to be polite.
So we have teams. We have.
We do.
Next up.
Unless you're the fireman.
Hello, Paula, how are you?
Welcome. Evening. Hello. Um, I'm your tax collector. And just so that everybody else is tooting their horns on what they do in their office, I like to mention what we collect. Not only do we collect the real estate, personal property and motor vehicle taxes four times a year for the real estate. Um, we also collect public utility, water and sewer, four times a year, four quarters a year. And sewer assessments, I have four projects going that we collect once a year on. And we also do sprinklers and hydrants. So out of the twelve months, we're collecting eleven months. The only month we don't collect anything is February. So, with that being said.
It's not all the people. So on a salary wise, the water department pays twenty percent of the salaries for the tax collectors office. Sewer pays twenty percent of the salary. So what you see in her budget line is just what the general fund portion.
Oh, okay.
For the tax collector.
Thank you. Um, with that being said, as you can see, the postage is the only major increase I have. Um, and that just goes with the mailings we do and the postage increase.
Well, with your employees under salaries, how many more step increases do we expect over the next? Because obviously that's why your fourth point said someone had a step increase in that.
So.
I think just Shannon's on her step, sorry.
Yeah. So, uh, at this point, she gets one a year.
And how many years does that go for?
Uh, depends on what she's hired at, but, um, like, wait a minute. I think there's a couple more years. And two of her, two of the people in the office are non-union. So that's set by the first selectmen and two are, uh, by union.
But does the step account for the change or four point four seven or?
That's in there. So the steps part of it. It's also because two of the people are non-union and their raises are set after the budget. So anybody non-union, the first selectman decides what their salary is after the budget and the differences in the wage adjustment.
Well, good. I guess the only question I have is, you know, why wouldn't we budget at top step? So you don't see these like fluctuations, you know, or a four point six seven percent increase. It makes it seem high when, if we just budgeted for the four employees at top step, because they're all going to be there eventually. You know, the money.
I'm just curious. Like, like, do we change it each?
Because on, on an off year, where let's say two employees, you know, leave falling, go sometimes.
Saying that.
Not you, we never want to leave you, but they get a better opportunity somewhere. You know, our budget shows a big decrease in the salary line.
Yeah, it, it's basically because we budget to the actuals. Because otherwise, you know, if we, this account could be, she's at, she's at ninety five percent. So I don't want to budget that extra five percent and have the mill, it would make a small, if anything, increase in the mill rate. But if we did it across the board, I mean, the salaries are, we're short of other. Yeah, but it's, we try to, I actually go to the point of if they get their increase December first, I figure out five months at their current, seven months at their step, and that's what I budget. I just try to budget as close to, just because every little dollar that the mill rate doesn't have to go up, I did it. So.
Thank you, Brian. Paul.
Well, two more steps, by the way. She's at ninety five percent right now.
So, um, yeah, you're awesome. Uh, eight twenty, um, I decreased the class, classes because my clerk, my one clerk, um, she took the first two classes. She has two more classes to go. If she is going to get certified, but I don't think she's gonna be here to do that. She's, not that she's older, she is older. But, um.
Maybe tread lightly and just say.
Fifty seven or fifty eight or something?
Yeah, maybe, maybe stop talking, Paul.
Yeah. But no, she, she needs to learn office stuff more so at this point than continuing classes. Um, my other clerk is certified. She passed the examination and my assistant is taking the exam again in May to get certified. Um, so that all stays the same.
Great. Lisa, did you have a flyer for Paula? I'm just asking.
Documentation?
I mean, I know you're on that side of the whole. Does anybody have any questions for Paul?
I, I do. Yes, for Paul, on the, uh, postage increase, is that just on the town size? Is that also, uh, on the BUC site?
That's just the town side. Utility side.
So it's all, so the salary is a percentage. Everything else, all the other charges for stuff is broken out by actual.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right. Next is two hundred, social services.
Hey, everybody. My name is Nicole. This is Damian. Brad is laughing because he knows this is my favorite time of the year.
You always get so nervous right in front of us.
I'm so nervous. This is not here to like keep me focused. Wait, wait, I gotta interrupt.
Don't you, don't you stop. I'm sorry. Paul is, uh, union rep would like to say something.
Her last year was at ninety nine point six percent. At present time, for January, we're at seventy six percent.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah. Hey, can you hold on a second? Um, Meredith, would you like to serve your moral support? You sure? Okay. Cause you're, you're a big part of that office. So I wanted to ask.
And she can have a candy cane also.
And I apologize.
Yeah.
I need part of Lisa's salary increase for what she said to me.
Are you vouching for her salary? I mean, you're pretty far down the line.
Megan, you got this.
I got this. All right. So mine, the, the budget that I'm asking overall is a hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is an increase of four point two percent, four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, which really I don't have much to write home about. Um, you could see it's all in the salary. Um, my part-time Mary is my number one gal. And then I also have other per diem, or Mary's per diem. Um, and then I have other per diem staff to help support the, the, um, department during the really busy times of the year. So, so far, I have about seven hundred and fifty hours, um, of assistance a year. So far, we're about at two hundred and sixty hours with that. Um, we do a lot of things. Mary and I do a lot of home visits. We have, uh, Phil McHalester back there. Um, the police officers, first responders make a lot of referrals to us. We have people calling um, independently with concerns and loved ones that have concerns. Um, the school system that, you know, anybody that has concerns, we work with everybody from little issues like how do I, what age do I apply for Medicare to more complex issues where there's a hoarder or, you know, something, you know, not pleasant going on at home. So we do have, um, we work closely with a lot of agencies. As you know, I, I am a proponent of utilizing agencies that are state and federally funded to help meet the needs of the residents here in town because they have the funds. So I will help people learn about those resources, apply for those resources, complete applications. Uh, we work closely with, um, elderly protective services. A lot of times the home visits that we do warrant, uh, elderly protective service referrals. Um, last twenty twenty-three, we had six referrals. Twenty twenty-four, we had six referrals. Um, we're also seeing an increase in, in homelessness. Um, not that we have people on the streets that are unsheltered, but we, uh, the, the motels in Bethel are one of the biggest culprits. We have Newtown, Brookfield, New Fairfield, um, that have no motels at all. The people that are evicted are not in good situation go into our motels and they become, um, one of our homeless people that, that need assistance and a lot of support. Um, so we try to get them into, uh, senior housing if they're age eligible. We also make a lot of referrals to Renewal House, um, which is a shelter in Danbury for seniors at the age of sixty and over. And they're a great transitional program. We have one resident there now. He's a senior who did live in Bethel and he's really thriving. We, um, did a little program for them this, this holiday season where we asked for donations. We brought stuff just because they do so much for us. So, so in twenty four, twenty five, so far, we've made five referrals to Renewal House. It's an application process. It's, they have to interview and, and they have to be a good fit. And, um, for the program, the program has to be a good fit for them. But one of my favorite things about Renewal Houses, they work with people from soup to nuts. So they make sure that they're going to have, uh, long-term self-sufficiency once they're, once they go get their own place. Amos House is another great, um, referral source. We, they are a, um, home in Danbury as well for, um, parents, mothers and, and young children. Um, so we make referrals to them. And then Homefront, or Lou Valente, who left, they help with any modifications in the home, um, or when you see blight issues, I, I get referrals from different people that, that concerned about a home. Uh, and I'll go out and try to meet with the person to see are they eligible for a home renovation project? And then we can refer. So if they're not able to, they usually try to get a local church or some, another organization to help. So we had a lot, we had a really nice, successful story with them. They referred, um, to a church in Ridgefield. And it was for a gentleman who had, didn't have cancer at the time, but he was really homebound. And, um, they helped get him a ramp. And he did pass away from cancer, but he was able to go outside and get to the hospital and get the help that he needed. So we've had a lot of great agencies that Mary and I've established good relation, working relationships with. Um, we also have a lot of donations from private residents that donate to help support. Um, in twenty twenty-four, we received nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars in cash assistance. And, um, sometimes they specify specific programs that they want that, those monies to be used for, or sometimes it's just general, whatever the, the need, the need is. Um, so far this year, we, in twenty twenty-five, we have a hundred dollars. And we did receive a, a grant for four thousand, five hundred from the United Way for an enrichment programs for, in addition to that nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five. We get a lot of gift cards. Um, some of the local churches are so supportive. All the programs that we do, most of them, um, the back to school is about fifteen thousand. So is the holiday gift giving program. We have a waitlist. We have like every child adopted out before Thanksgiving comes. Um, and people are waiting for children. So sometimes I hope I get more and more and more so I can give everybody a child to adopt. We, um, have giving trees out in Bethel. So of those giving trees, each program we do, um, that we have giving trees, it produces about three thousand dollars worth of gift cards that our families get to go out to the, you know, little eatery here in town and use their gift card. And the kids just love them. So we try to do different things like that. This back to school party, instead of having it here, we're gonna have it at the movie theater. So gives a little business to our, our local companies and businesses and the kids have class. So our biggest program is the food pantry. So far, we have two hundred and twenty-two households, households registered to utilize the food pantry. Since I've been here, um, this is my eighth time presenting. I've been here about seven and a half years. This is the second highest fiscal year. This is the second highest amount registered that this fiscal year. Last fiscal year was two hundred and forty. I'm sure we're gonna like pull that out of the water by June thirtieth. I imagine we'll have at least another forty people households register. So I know you like little stats, right?
Okay.
So, um, out of the two hundred and twenty-two households, a hundred and sixty-four of those households are renters. Ninety-four of those a hundred and sixty-four households rent house apartments. So, um, they're renting apartments within a home, a private home. Forty-three of our two hundred and twenty-two households are homeowners. Twenty-two of those. Twenty-two of those forty-three homeowners are seniors. We have five new seniors, I know last fiscal year I said that's what I'm seeing a biggest increase. I feel like that's the same this, uh, this fiscal year as well. We're seeing the, the most, um, increase in the senior population who need that extra support. They save for retirement, but the cost of living is just too expensive. So one of my favorite things about my job is getting to make sure they know about the resources that we have in town. Do they know about the senior tax relief? Are they eligible for that? Do they know about? The best thing about the state and federal, um, programs, they're increasing what their eligibility rates are as well. So they may not have been known that eligible, I tried three years ago to try again because it's gone up. Um, so the SNAP benefits, heating, everything has gone up eligibility. Even, um, Reynolds Ridge, Pinney's Park, you could be a household of one and get seventy-two thousand dollars. Earn seventy-two thousand dollars a year and still be eligible for their, their housing, which is why. Um, so. So those, those, um, households are comprised of four hundred and ninety-six people. Two hundred and twenty-five of those people are adults eighteen to fifty-nine, a hundred and thirty-six are children and a hundred and thirty-five are seniors. And just, I thought this was kind of interesting because I was really only looking at this to, in preparation for this, but out of the, um, forty-three homeowners that we have on our, our program, only three of them are household with adults only, they have no seniors and no children. This is small, most of them have either or both. So you know, we do some specialized programs, I just have this just in case you have any questions for me. Evictions is another thing, it's like hit or miss, we don't know. Are they gonna have a home to, are they gonna have resources, are they going to need storage? Because I'm, I'm still trying and I, I talked to, uh, uh, social workers from local towns to see what they do, I am going to re-approach the idea of seeing if we can have the municipalities removed from that process. I really feel that if someone's going to rent a home, an apartment, whatever, it should be their responsibility to, if someone's not paying to take care of the whole eviction process. The town of Bethel, for those of you that don't know, each municipality in, in America is, um, responsible to house the items from that eviction, if they, whatever they leave behind for fourteen days. Now, some of the households, I'm not familiar with the people at all, some I am, in that case, it's easy. I had a gal, my most recent eviction, I had her meet me at the storage unit, we put it in, in, uh, the town of Bethel, prior to that, she wasn't sure much, she was gonna be able to meet me. Um, she met me that evening there at the storage units and her name, all we had to do is pay for because she didn't need housing or anything else. I was just like, let's just get it out of our name because if it's in our name and they don't collect it, then we have to pay for it to be removed and, and disposed of. So it's hit or miss, we had two evictions so far this fiscal year, um, that both of which required storage units. Last year, we, last fiscal year, we had three, um, two actually took place and they needed, uh, storage units. United Way, I do like to utilize any resources, they have the giving fund, so I submitted, I was allowed to submit to, to, to families this year, so I always take advantage of that. If each was able to get a thousand, five hundred, we didn't get the funding yet, but it'll help them with whatever their, their needs are, we don't give them the money, but we write checks for their bill or if they need something, we purchase it for them. We still do the NGOs, a good process. I think Brad and Dan were able to, um, really put together where we're more involved in special fundraising events that they're doing, so get, gather the troops that might be interested in, in doing that particular fundraiser and supporting that agency. Does anybody have questions?
Just one quick one.
Yeah.
Uh, what is senior protective services?
Senior protective services is for, um, seniors that are either, um, involved in, in self-neglect or being abused, financially exploited financially or neglected or suffering from physical or emotional abuse. So I'm a mandated reporter, I mean, I would report it anyway, um, but I, but that's what I would have to report to, it's a state organization that are eight, entity that, um, will go out and make sure that person is.
The services that, uh, appropriate state agencies come and investigate and provide, give guidance on how to provide the right services?
Yeah, some of, so, uh, we work hand in hand in a lot of the cases, the, um, elderly protective service worker and, and myself. Sometimes they just need, uh, somebody come in and clean their home. Sometimes they are not appropriate to be living in their home and they don't have family members. There is a, uh, a gal who was living in a garage, a senior at the granddaughter's home, and that was somebody that we called for. So she was literally living in a garage on a hard cement floor with a little hospital bed. You know, it's, so thankfully people see those situations and bring them to my attention. Or the EMTs are first responders when they're responding to situations that just are not good in the home, and sometimes it's self-neglect, you know, I mean, it's hard because people are aging, they don't wanna leave their home, they don't wanna lose their independence and here, you know, they, and sometimes it's just like referring them to the Connecticut Home Care Program for the elderly to get some resources to help them manage their needs at home. And that's also led into the state.
Can I just say something? Because I interrupted, but I have to tell you, I've been here for a long time and we've had other social workers. I cannot tell you how wonderful this person is and what she does and goes above and beyond and Mary as well. And she doesn't only give services to other people outside here, she gives services to employees that work here too. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that she's worth every penny.
And all her pennies do.
Is there a fire?
No. So.
Anybody have any questions for Meg? Brian, you got Jay Mark?
Put this poor girl out of her misery, let her go.
You did a great job like you do every year.
I don't know, I can't help it. I've been that way since I was in first grade when I.
That presentation didn't go well, did it?
All the students to turn their desks around so they didn't see me.
I can't believe somebody would do that to you.
Barry, thank you for coming and thank you for your time. All right, moving right along. Um, we have emergency, uh, management, I think Tommy's here, is he here?
So, um, a- as usual, nothing, nothing exciting here on emergency management, we're trying to keep it that way. So obviously the salary is a salary. So again, just a reminder, part of that, about ten thousand, that gets reimbursed. I wanna say annually, but the state is very far behind in their reimbursements, they're like two or three years behind. But there's an emergency management, a, a federal grant that we get, uh, money for that, about ten thousand dollars a year. That covers mostly the salary, a little bit of the tower lease for that. Um, and again, the tower lease, it's a radio tower lease up on Spring Hill for police fire, radios, emergency management radios, that's a contractual five percent increase every year. So that's what that amount is, uh, Everbridge is the same amount this year. Um, and then we were able to drop down the active nine-one-one, again, that's the, um, alerting software for, for fire and EMS, we moved to a new, an entire new records management system um, that's being paid out between the fire departments and I, my part of it. So we're getting away from that, that, uh, app for alerting for emergency calls and going to a different system, so we're gonna be able to get rid of most of that, we still have some of the paramedics and and other staff on there, so we just wanna keep some of those on there for another year, so we transition completely. And that was another bit for emergency apps, nothing else major. Some of the guys, any questions?
Any questions for Tommy on our side?
Nope.
Okay, so go to the door, come back in for fire.
Um, so fire marshal, um, so the change here is, I'm, I'm putting in again, like everybody else, uh, as mentioned, I know it's gonna be a tough budget year, but just looking at the amount of, um, inspection increases we're getting here, I've had a part-time marshal for, since June that's been on. Uh, it's been great, it's increased our inspections quite a bit. But, uh, just with all the, the apartments we're getting in town, um, again, just did a quick count. Um, you know, in Stony Hill, we've got nine new apartment buildings with over a hundred and there are two hundred and fifty units. And then we've got another six rate downtown here. Another twenty or thirty apartment units in there. So those are supposed to be inspected annually, um, again, to talk to a lot of towns, usually we're not hitting that state mandate of every year, you know, the, the inspection schedule depending on the type of occupancy. Um, so just looking to maybe get another part-timer for just ten hours a week, just to help with some of that inspection load, um. I find myself not necessarily going out and doing as many inspections as I used to with plan reviews for new construction, complaints, going out with, uh, Megan on complaints, things like that. You know, my kind, it's taken away a little bit with, we're trying to get out and doing all the inspections as well, so just to add maybe a part-time person or increase the hours a little bit on the current part timer. Okay, that can be an option to add some money there. I don't, I honestly don't know what, what the hour amount is you can have for a part-timer before they consider it not part-time.
We cap it at nineteen.
We do have it at nineteen?
He's only at ten now, right?
Well, the one, the currently is like eighteen.
Can he do more?
Yeah, he could do, yeah, he could do a few more.
If we do more, at some point you reach a point where you have to offer a help benefit.
Twenty-five or?
Twenty-five is the number. Usually HR caps everything at nineteen, I think twenty-five is, but that allows weeks when there is a little bit of an increase.
Yeah.
Because if you run right at that cap and then something happens and they're filling in, then they go over and they can come after us. Which would be a lot more than thirteen thousand dollars.
Right. So that's it for the salaries, then, uh, office expenses, again, nothing really changed, just, we did cut down last year, we cut down, right, the office spends quite a bit because we weren't yet spending a lot of it, but, um, there is a, a need for for the smoke detectors that actually, just like everything else, right, they've gotten very expensive. We, we have people coming to the office quite often, uh, looking for free smoke detectors for their homes and obviously we don't wanna say no to them, I give a lot to the, to the fire departments, they keep on the apparatus. Um, but they go to a call and there's a bad smoke detector, CO detector, we try to replace them so that the person has something in their home, so we just wanna try to be able to keep a, a good stock of that in there, so there's a small increase for that. And then training and education, again, just a small increase now with the part-time part-timer, we have to maintain ninety hours every three years of continuing education. Um, state does offer some classes throughout the year that are free. That's paid for through a building permit fee, it's for fire and building officials. But that doesn't always keep us at our thirty hours a year, so there's conferences and whatnot to go to, so that would help with, um, paying for that for the conferences, so.
Didn't you get sort of a special certification this year too, though?
What's that?
Didn't you get a special certification this year too?
Oh, that was in emergency management.
Sorry, we're past that already. Can't talk about it.
But thanks, Brian. So that's, that's it.
Any questions?
I'm gonna do a pulse of house.
I know you are, yeah. I knew you were gonna do.
Uh, fees for, for your fire sprint room inspections and these, uh, apartments that they're putting up all over town.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. You know, we, we have, it's, we'd have to do an ordinance, right? And we went down that road many years ago and it was overwhelmingly put down by the town at that time, so.
Tommy, I'm sorry, you're asking about the metering fees or something?
Inspection fee.
Inspection fee.
Some towns do that, you know, maybe twenty-five dollars per apartment unit or a hundred dollars for assembly.
Fees, fees.
Yeah, a flat, you know, a hundred dollars for a little.
Set these inspections up, you know, they're, they're putting up hundreds of apartments in town now and we're expected to have our people go out and inspect them, so it, it's something I think we should look at in the future.
And why didn't it work, Tommy, I'm sorry? You tried it years past. When I first started, so maybe seventeen years ago, eighteen years ago, um, it just was during the public hearing process, it didn't make it through that
Did, do other towns do it?
Yeah, other towns, Danbury does it, Brookfield does it, um, you know, and, and they put it out there for the fee to get collected. I had no idea what their collection rate is. That's just, um, apartments not. No, they, well, they do it on all, all.
Commercial building, certain size or something.
Assembly, yeah, assembly, I could be churches, you know, businesses, stores, restaurants, any of those, but. Again, obviously how much you collect will be based on what those fees are.
Right. When, when you inspect an apartment building such as up in Stone Hill, do you have to go into each apartment or you just do the exterior hallway?
Technically, we're supposed to go in every single unit yet, so sometimes it's, it's very difficult to schedule that with people, so we try to get a percentage of them, at least.
How many units for their inspection, is it a three-family, four-family?
It's three-family more.
Three-family more churches.
And you're at least doing the common areas?
Oh, yeah, 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 yep.
Anybody have any questions for Tommy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have, uh, Bethel Fire Department, South Street, South First, and then it's three-ten. Who's presenting there?
Nick, stick around for me. I'd like to start, I'm fire chief from the downstairs of Bethel.
Do you have a fire for Megan or no?
She made an excellent presentation, I have to say something, perhaps she does. We have had some very serious situations in the last few years. Without her intervention, I cannot tell you how many families in need would end up in our own world. We, we've had some family develop to some incredibly heart-wrenching situations. Um, people living in storage units, stuff like that, um, people that just the conditions we went into were, were just, uh, beyond description. And if it wasn't for, for assistance in the fire department, um, again, I don't know where, where we would have ended up. But everything that she did get involved with ended up with a positive outcome, I just had to say that, so.
Thanks.
Don't say that in me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
It's okay, that'll be twenty dollars.
Or percentage on increase.
Uh, Beth Fire Department.
If you were to go to address yourself since you're.
Douglas Keeler Fire Commission. Representing Fire Commission. I'll say with both departments.
Maybe your name and, you know, did you, I'm sorry, you speak quick.
I couldn't hear you.
Yeah.
Douglas Keeler.
Chair of the third fire commission.
Some of the younger guys are a little better.
Uh, so the Bethel Fire Department budget, um, is, uh, there's one, there's one contentious item in here, right, I'm sure everyone's found a big contentious item in retention. And, and that's a, uh, we have that, it shows up in both budgets. And what we're trying to do is socialize the, the idea of a, of going to a paper call type of thing to incentivize people to continue to show up. Uh, and the idea there is to avoid having to have a career fire department at some point. So that's, if you, if you take that out of that, call that an extraordinary item and take it out, the budget's relatively flat, it's a one point six percent increase.
So. Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
I think we're all committed to doing something. I'm not so sure that's the line that's gonna come from when we do, do something. My question would be is if, if we cut out what you were thinking for that, what's necessary for dues and training this year? And again, I don't want you to think that because we're reducing that line, we're not saying we wanna do something to increase, you know, retention, like I said, I'm just not so sure we're sure where it's gonna come from yet.
Right, and I understand, and I'll give you a little background on that number as well. In, in both departments, what we did was is, let's just take a shot at it. Ten dollars per person for a call. And that's, and that's where that rolled up to, we can make a program around, it's not ten dollars a person, you know.
We're all gonna discuss it, what I'm saying is, is last year, you needed, uh, oh, he's got what he wants.
Six hundred and thirty dollar increase?
So here's the, uh, here's the breakdown, they kept everything else in that apartment flat, retention piece is forty-six thirty, so it's broken out.
I, I, you know, we haven't talked about that retention as a group.
We've talked about it between the selectmen and, and a few of the board of finance. There may be a different tool that we may fund that, so don't, please, don't think.
If it comes out of your budget, I won't say they're not gonna. It's just that I'm not a hundred percent sure that that's the line that something like that belongs.
I think we're all talking about it cooperatively, and that's the idea we were.
Oh, yeah. We want to have a joint meeting at the fire commission, the board of selectmen, and the board of finance to discuss.
Obviously, we're in the middle of our budget season, um, but please don't make, you know, like.
Don't have people come after us. All right, saying they don't care about us, because that's not.
So we, we hear you, we understand it, we know there's an issue and we're working on it. There's no car fires in the parking lot.
Exactly. The bank would not be happy.
But can, but Doug, can you talk to that number and how the commission did the evaluation or the equation to come up with the forty?
Yeah, so that was.
So many calls by so many guys, ten dollars.
Ten dollars a call per member that responded on a call through the course of last year.
Okay, so you took it, it's, this is based on actual numbers last year.
Right.
And if you said this, that's what it's gonna cost per year for an apartment.
Right, so one call had three guys on it, that's a thirty dollar part of that number.
So if anything, I think that's, that's a, a, a valuable piece of information moving forward to figure out how we compensate a bunch of great guys in the community that, that, that help hard.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, great. Um, other than that, the budget, that, take that away, the budget's relatively flat for Pepo.
They're very, very responsible, but.
Are there any questions about any of the particulars? Some, some lines went up, some went down, but ultimately pretty, pretty tight. Is there money in there for new turnout here? I know um the past chiefs that Yep. Tried to, you know, keep that going. It is there, I think it's five thousand dollars this year, it's in the uh equipment and supplies fifty-two.
Yep.
The, did you move the, so the Scott AV three thousand high temp base mask was budgeted for forty-five hundred last year. Is that pretty much now included in the forty-five number, or you don't think you're gonna buy any of those in twenty-five, twenty-six?
Yes, the uh, we kind of talked to the, or speak to that issue. The uh requirements to update the air pack masks, um, is considerable. In fact, we had a uh guest speaker in this specialized in that last night. That had a weekly drill and broke it down into uh the advantages of going to the higher temperature mask. Um, and they called it the HT three hundred. Basically, what they, they do is they raise the ability of that mask to go from a two-hundred-seventy-five degree uh resistance to heat up to about five-hundred-twenty-five degrees Fahrenheit. The other thing they do is they double seal it now instead of a single seal. Um, they had an extra strap to the top, it's Kevlar based. Um, they have a speaking diaphragm in there on both sides that allow for the level that I'm speaking at right now to be clearly heard. Um, whereas the older mask, it could do none of that.
Uh, so, but, sorry, I didn't mean to pitch up, but so it's now, so that line was removed. So is that now just in the forty-five-nine-seven-six number? Cause if you look at the current year that we're in, the prior year, but the twenty-five budget, that's four thousand five hundred dollars for the high temp masks.
Correct.
And forty-one thousand for firefighting gear. And then request is forty-six thousand just in the firefighting gear.
Well, why is that not in there?
Yeah.
Yes, what happened is we uh, we requested twelve new air packs in September of twenty twenty-one. Unfortunately, COVID followed very quickly and uh most of the manufacturers come shot. Uh, unfortunately, all the components of air packs require a three-third-party vendor testing. Uh, all those vendors shut down as well. So last night where the parts of the program had addressed those issues, uh, we had requested twelve full sets of air packs, which included the masks, the mask would have addressed that issue. What we're seeing right now is that the uh, fortunately, the air packs that, you know, we like to get probably gonna be pushed back even further now. So we're three and a half years into that request, our air packs are aging. Uh, last year we were able to buy a reasonable amount of those high-temperature masks um and assign them to the high-volume responders, make them respond for the care of the, the mask, the mask bags to go with it. And it's working out a lot better because they, it's their own mask, they're custom fit, it's more affordable. But we, we had expected with the twelve new air packs, get twelve bottles, twelve high-temperature masks. Unfortunately, as you can see now, that, as I just explained, this is getting pushed off again. We don't know when, we're hoping, at, at worst case scenario, by July first. And then we can get these, you know, the negative aspect of that brad is the fact that the prices that they estimate these air packs will cost is gonna be, twelve is gonna be a little bit more than what's currently appropriate. The reason that happened was there was a sufficient amount of money in the past budgets appropriated for that. But since we've been delayed three and a half years, a lot of our air bottles expired. So we had to take some of that money out to replace those expired air bottles. We did not buy new ones, we bought used ones. And we're very fortunate, we found different fire departments were getting rid of used air bottles. We saved a considerable amount of money by doing so. So uh, we were gonna cover those extra masks in those twelve purchases.
So yes, so the board knows, the board's the selectmen and board of finance in September of twenty-one, um, approved the hundred and eleven thousand six forty-eight. He spent twelve thousand nine forty-eight of it. The ninety-seven is still sitting out there in C N R on this order waiting for these to come in. So it's going on three and a half years.
So I'm, I'm taking a look here too at the capital and, oh, take it back, that's Stone Hill. Thank you. Hundred twenty, it's, that's the refurbishment tank.
Yes.
Yeah, that's not the.
Brad, thank you. I'm sorry.
No, no, so, so the hundred and eleven thousand was already approved, we were just.
Right, correct, those are the ones that were ordered three and a half years ago that they still haven't got.
Yeah, and you can see three and a half years the prices. But uh, we need air pack, we, we have, our, our air pack are old. Uh, we were able to, uh, some were donated recently, it saves us a ton of money. Uh, we were able to do some upgrades, but the bottom line, we have air packs over thirty years of age.
So are we gonna have to change that amount because of how long we waited?
Well, uh, as Brad just pointed out, we're about twelve thousand below the original appropriation. And uh, in order to get the twelve air packs, um, we would have to go back up to somewhere near that number. I would think that a hundred and twelve to a hundred and fifteen thousand would be adequate uh to get the twelve.
The former chief kept telling me that they were gonna hold the price, but maybe that's not.
Yeah, well, that was, you know, years past, the dealer was here last night, he's one of the largest air pack dealers in the United States. Very bright, uh, talented guy and has a uh, you know, he was the New York City vendor, so he knows what he's talking about. And uh, he said, don't expect that now. See, un-unfortunately, you know, we're, we're subject to the corporate world. And uh, the idea was in order to maintain a good working relationship with the customer base, they would hold the prices. It's gonna be almost impossible to do that. We have three and a half years of uh third-party vendors, you know, trying to catch up with the COVID situation. There's no way to hold the prices, and that's what we're finding out now. And while we're talking about that as well, is we also haven't talked about turnout here, the personal protective equipment. And he said, you watch, he said, within the next year or so, we're at adequate individual firefighter, we're gonna be at or just above five thousand dollars each. So it's, it's not something that, and we go to bit of this stuff, we don't get around. They take advantage of state pricing, regional pricing, et cetera, both New York, Connecticut, Massachusetts, always trying to find the lowest price. And uh, we still have to look forward at that. Uh, we're also being very strict about who we buy that gear for. They have to be certified, they have to come to a decent number of fire falls. And then we look at that, we don't buy everybody brand-new gear. And of course, you know, that makes people unhappy a lot of times, but it's just the way the ball bounces. And uh, you earn that right to get a new set of gear, it shouldn't be that way for volunteers, but that's what you do. And uh, in the long run, it kind of works out, but not always. So I'd like you to keep that in mind as well. The really, the biggest thing I'm concerned about is the air packs. Uh, it's the biggest hit you'll take on an OSHA investigation, we had that happen a couple of years ago. Uh, recently in, in the adjoining county, the Orlando New York State, they had a very aggressive OSHA city inspection, and they found two departments with air bottles that were expired. Fifteen-year life on these air bottles, and they hit them for five thousand dollars per bottle. Now, a new bottle, half-hour bottle is about thirteen hundred. So you can see about three and a half times the cost, um, if they had purchased when they should have, and they did. Um, and then uh, the other thing that we have in here is our education, I just want to touch that really quickly. Is that uh, through that same intervention by your friends at OSHA, they found departments where they had not been training to an adequate level. I can tell you that we train here regularly, we, I think we do a pretty decent job. And what happened was the officers have to be trained, or have some level of training above that of the normal firefighters. Failure to do that is also a pretty large OSHA hit. And there was one fire department over there, they immediately moved the church because he was not at that level. So staying on top of that is not cost-free. We bring in outside instructors, which we don't do as much for you, because we have pretty good instructors educated. Myself have a couple of degrees, one in fire predictions or technology, we have looked at a lot of that in-house. And uh, but uh, you can see that there's about twenty thousand in there for education, conferences. It's the only way we're gonna stay ahead of, ahead of everything that's required. And it's not just us, Stony Hill, all the fire departments. So when you look at those numbers, well, you're okay for today. But you know, down the road, that's gonna change a little bit, just to maintain some level of, for a, a level response and trainer level, uh, area in which we, we know that we're not gonna be subject to an OSHA investigation, subsequent fines. Uh, and, and the right thing to do is to keep your people educated. We do the same thing to school system. And we're prepared to do the same thing with the fire service. Anything else?
I was just gonna go back to the, the expired bottles.
Yeah.
We don't have any bottles you're using that are expired right now.
No.
Okay.
Uh, no.
Because of the used ones you bought and stuff, and you're okay until you get them replaced?
We are, but we're not, we're knocking at that door right now. Um, that's why we had to pull that twelve-seven out of the, that air pack.
Buy the used ones, I get it, yes.
And the rule of thumb is uh, the bottles are about a hundred dollars per remaining year in service. So new bottle being about thirteen, thirteen-fifty, we were able to buy some for, for every year that we can get another year out of it. So a three-year bottle costs us three hundred dollars. We were very fortunate that one of the departments that we bought those bottles from and in excellent shape, uh, had also gotten a substantial uh grant. And what it is, they bought all new air packs, they complete with all the latest technology, trying to fix a border as well. And uh, subsequent to that, that department, uh, the current chief up there is Father, I go back many, many years, good friends, probably recently deceased. And he called me up, I told him what was going on, how over a week for the air packs. And he called me up about three months later, he said, take a write-up, I wanna talk to you, and I get up there and he and his officer, he's taking all the older air packs that they had and donated to the fire department.
Donated?
Donated, we had to upgrade, we had to test them and everything like that. But that, all that did uh mission is just to get us closer to when the new bottle will be manufactured. All right, so where will those go when we get to new bottles? Those will be our training air packs, they'll still be certified. And now it's gonna allow us to train without having to take the air packs off the apparatus, put them back on. Could be halfway through a drill, have half a bottle, and then a firewall's up, now we gotta struggle to make sure we have full air packs over there. So we were fortunate there, we got about a dozen. Uh, that was highly unusual, I don't think I'll ever have to get it my lifetime, but it worked well for us.
Further to answer your question, we, the fire commission have a documented list now, when these bottles are coming up and that's reflected in them.
So the one I just handed out, the one I printed earlier, and sorry, we're running out of ink because of the chief upstairs. Wait till the last second.
Yeah.
The highlighted ones are now what the fire commission had done. So the top line says S E B A bottles, ten-year plan. And you can see those on there, and the tire replacement plan is out there too. Uh, so.
Well, um, chief, with respect to the training funds, is that taking into account that if NFPA comes out and the OSHA adopts it, that we're gonna need higher-trained officers on the scene, we have to start looking at that?
That's an existing uh guideline right now. Remember, NFPA or, or guidelines, OSHA's law, but OSHA uses the NFPA guidelines for their enforcement. So um, you really, once you have the NFPA uh guidelines in place, and they change pretty regularly. Right now, they're trying to do some major changes in the fire service. Cause there have been major changes now in almost forty years. And newer changes are gonna be, if they ought to pass, they're gonna be substantial. And a lot of those areas are gonna be in the areas of equipment and also in uh the uh training as well, turnout here, things like that, air packs. But we're hoping that uh, you know, there'll be some type of a uh sunset there, it'll let us, you know, work our way into it for a couple of years. And so in the apparatus though, I think you're gonna see some changes.
So I know with, with the training, I've slid the number, and sometimes it looks a lot, because obviously, a lot of this is training new firefighters. Just wanna make sure you have adequate support to train to the other standards, like the higher levels of officers and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah, this past year, I probably went to three of the new NFPA standard conferences. Um, and we're very fortunate, some were presented here in Connecticut, some were out of state, and uh they're, they're substantial. And I've been around a long time and I'll tell you what, what they propose, if it goes through, it's gonna be you're gonna have to have somebody in charge of your training, and someone in charge of putting an apparatus, it's gonna be have, gonna have to be on top of all the stuff or to implement it in timely fashion and make sure that it's done reasonably of financial standpoint. I can't tell you what that's gonna be, but it's something you should be very aware of, it's covered.
Okay, chief. Yes, um, uh, can you uh pin these people down for prices on these um bottles when they might arrive? Uh.
You mean new ones?
Yeah, the new ones, because if we're gonna be short money, we're, we're gonna have to look for money to offset those costs, so you know, it's it's gonna be within this budget year, it has to come out as something different, or if it's gonna be a next budget year, we can appropriate something in the next budget.
We already have a.
It's under capital plan, which.
In your friend or.
Yeah. So the one I just.
No, for the bottles that we have. The twelve, the twelve-seven that were short.
Yes, that uh, that's only gonna be, that'll get us from the ten that we're probably gonna afford now back up to the twelve if we want it. Cause the twelve allows us to put new air packs on three pieces of apparatus.
Right.
We have to drop, drop down to ten.
And.
Oh, so you would just take ten to fill one?
And both, but whatever other piece of apparatus out to go, we have the old air packs on. And some of these things are not necessarily compatible.
It is.
That's capital undercurrent. We can make.
It's under, you're gonna adjust it.
Yeah, it's capital undercurrent.
It's not a problem.
Well, see if we can be the vendor of a little bit of like, look, we had to wait three and a half years.
Let's say that and fifty cents.
I know.
No, if we get back up to a neighborhood of the prior appropriation, I think we're gonna.
Have three and a half years.
And Brad, what was that number? That was sitting down, never, never land.
Ninety-eight, seven?
Ninety.
That's the other portion of that.
Okay. So uh, a-anything else, because we do need to kind of move along.
Good question.
Okay. Yes.
So I wanna go back to the retention thing for a minute, I think you're gonna need to bump that up by whatever percent you think it's gonna be successful. You gave the examples of three firefighters show up to a call, that's thirty dollars. If the new incentive is gonna get the fourth guy to show up, you're up by twenty-five percent. So, so you might need to recalculate that.
I can address that, Commissioner, uh, Brad helped us out with that. Uh, the estimated uh appropriation that is past your qua, past clause um, brought us to that, that uh figure that's in there now, about sixty thousand. Uh, but what Brad proposed was that between the two departments, they add an extra twenty thousand, which would bring us up around a hundred thousand. So, which addressed any like striking calls, things like that.
Let me, let me handle that if I, if I could, so what we're probably gonna look, look at is what Brian was alluding to earlier. This will be pulled out of both budgets. And I think what we'll do is try to find another fund now that addresses the whole thing together, like a volunteer fireman incentive fund. Uh, and then, and then.
On every call, it might.
Right, we might get a certain amount. I think, I think you funded, we'll create a program around how we.
Well, I just don't feel like we wanna track every single call, Brad, sending ten dollars every week for like however many calls, I mean, you guys keep track of the calls and, you know.
Maybe.
We're gonna talk about how many calls, and if they make the amount of calls they're supposed to, they get the snipe them.
So we're gonna, we're gonna work.
We're gonna work that.
There's a lot of discussion.
They are attracting that information, yeah.
I understand what you, but in fairness to the finance department. There's a lot of things that go into how you do it, whether it's a snipe then, whether it's.
Right, that's all to be.
So, so it has to, you know, benefit both, you know.
We're gonna work on it once we get a.
We're gonna work on it, but we need the fire commission at one of our meetings.
Yeah, okay.
Great, anybody else?
That's it.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, thanks for your service.
Take care.
Thanks, Doug.
All right, Stony Hill. We have a new chief here, Mr. Doug.
Oh, yeah.
I thought I was going to see the chief that.
Stooling Doug's.
Stooling Doug.
Doug and Doug Show.
Trying to change as many people here as we possibly can.
They're almost at the same barber. Nice to see you.
Uh, so Stony Hills, uh, budget will take you back the, uh, you back that one time where they charged out of there for the retention. Uh, come down to around seventeen percent increase. Uh, one of the big drivers there is gear, we talked about gear in a previous session, price of gear is going up. Uh, uh, Stony Hills had done a really good job, uh, bringing people in. They have new firefighters coming in. So there's a increase in that budget line from thirty-five thousand to fifty thousand requests. Um, some other extraordinaries or, or higher ones, uh, two thousand dollars for hose that Stony Hill owes to Bethel. Um, there was a hose, a hose transfer at one point that needs to be repaid back. Other than that, it's relatively, uh, relatively flat as well.
I need to click on the turnout here for that old bar some. How many, how many firefighters do you have that are certified to go inside a structure fire that are actually able to go in the burn building?
I just don't have that number right here.
Uh, you gotta have an idea, right?
Uh, I believe it's around thirty.
Thirty that are certified to go into a structure fire?
Yes.
Thirty. How many of those currently out here?
Uh, everybody has gear.
And how many have you just put on?
How many have we just put on?
Yeah, how many firefighters did you just put on?
We just got real quick. We just got four hundred people.
What does it cost for the firefighter turnout here? What's it for, for, I guess it's called a bunker gear or something?
From head to toe, it's, it's roughly around five thousand dollars.
Five thousand.
So.
There's a ten-year lifeline gear and then there's also the top responders up.
At two cents a year.
Because you have to bring them back. You can't just, you can't go again. You have to purpose that gear before you go again.
Um, is it possible? I know you got, the Fire Commission did the ten-year for the S B A S whatever. And that's, can we get a list at some point of like, would be expiration of the firefighting gear? Um, just because it'd be helpful. I understand if you have somebody to leave, that's my size and then somebody replaces me that like, that's smaller than me, like you can't, it's not a one for one. So it's not necessarily the gear. It's not going to, we're not going to try to hold you to it, but I think it would be helpful, even though it's not capital, it's operational. Just to understand that if, if it's underfunded one year, is it going to make it a huge increase the next year or?
It's a great, it's a balance.
And, and it's just a big jump in one year. I'm not saying that we don't want you to have gear, but, you know, we're facing some serious challenges. You know, this year with our budget, so, you know, we have to examine. Every, that's why I just wonder how much cost gear, how many guys have gear? And if you have information that you could email everyone, that might be helpful for us to, in making our decisions. You know, with, and possibly.
And that goes for Bethel as well, if you have information you want to submit.
That would help.
Oh, wow.
Oh, yours didn't really, yours didn't really grow.
Yeah.
I just find it helpful that, because you know it has a ten-year shell, shell foot. So if you bought twenty sets nine years ago, I'd rather know now that next year is going to be a problem.
We have our commission made for that, so we can.
Okay.
Start wrapping the plan. We'll send you one email then.
And you're not putting turnout gear on your capital list at this point? I see bottles, but not turnout gear?
It's in their operating.
It's an operating.
It's an operating. So how many firefighters do you have sold?
Well, I. No, not everyone has it. We have guys that don't come out and call. They're, they're members, but they don't, they're not.
So you, let's say out of those thirty, you have sixty sets of turnout gear, right?
No, we do not have sixty sets.
Everyone has that.
Everybody is not.
Top responders.
Top responders. Yeah, they're chief officers and the, they have two sets of gear.
What would be helpful for me, like, you know, out of the thirty people who like, if need turnout gear, how many sets of turnout gear is that? That's all. When you send your email, that's why I know. Like if you have fifteen top responders, they have thirty and then you have another fifteen, that's forty-five. It's just, just so we get a mental note of, you know, especially going out long-term. Uh, so we kind of have it in our heads, Brad. So that'd be very helpful to me. I appreciate it very much.
I can just mention to you, if you're, had a turnout gear and you left, they hand it down to some, a newbie or a trainee. They, they, they don't. I understand. But Megan's not going to fit in my old turnout gear.
Oh, sure she will.
Yeah. I'll just put a couple of Megan's.
It's worth asking, the top responders.
Can I request a seat change?
The, uh, the top responders that are external only, do they have two sets of?
No.
Do they wear the light set? I know one of the Bethel officers is trying a, was trying, one of, former officer maybe, was trying the light set of gear.
No, we don't have it. Okay. It's, uh, that we should look into is just, uh.
The ten-year mandate is only for interior firefighters.
Interior, yeah.
So if you have somebody that's driving or coming to the. Outside only, they can have gear that's over ten years old.
Fair enough. Thank you.
And how do you decipher i- its outside gear and inside gear?
By the age.
I'm sorry. No, but I'm saying if OSHA showed up, how are you going to say, oh, I'm an outside guy? You know what I mean?
By documentation and training.
That's what I'm asking, there's documentation.
Don't you have a different? We all have our tags. The tag, the tag you check in with is a different color.
And that tag is with the serial number of the jacket.
They're, they're color-coded with their name on it. So if it's green, they're interior firefighters. If it's red, they're exterior, they're interior EMS only. You know, so that at the command table will know who's there and what their level of, um, responses.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm really worried about Bob. I think he's going to get a blood clot, so. Do you want to walk around with a bomb or?
It'd be helpful.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the consideration.
Of course.
All right. Next up to the fire department emergency.
We got Janice. Now this is what we're all waiting for. Thank you, everybody. Yeah, I was going to say, we'll, we'll wait for it.
What's that?
Please.
Uh, for those that don't know me or what I teach, it's a popular question that I got. Um, my name is Janice Chris Janis. I'm the Director of Economic Development. Um, I'm a one-person department that supports only thirteen hundred businesses. Um, in my role, I focus on quality areas, business support and expansion, strategic newly partnerships, marketing and business promotion, and community enhancement and infrastructure, um, improvement. So in layman's terms, I assist with identifying and promoting local commercial capital leaves, streamline local business recruitment processes such as permits and licensing, connect businesses with trending opportunities, grants and incentives, provide youth education, networking events and mentorship programs, support workforce development and talent acquisition. I also collaborate with local organizations, stakeholders and government entities, and I strengthen relationships to drive economic and social growth. We're currently a member of the Western Connecticut Economic Development District through West Cod and Advanced C T, which is a nonprofit, um, state economic organization. I'm on the board of directors of four, um, boards, Bethel Chamber of Commerce, Bethel Arts, which I founded and am currently chair, Lucidonic Industrial Development Corp. and Heart Transit. Um, I enhance visibility through targeted marketing efforts and promotional campaigns, showcase local business and economic opportunities, support projects that improve public spaces and commercial areas, drive initiatives that enhance the overall quality of life and business environment, and identify transportation needs and commercial real estate and redevelopment opportunities. In terms of some of the two thousand twenty-four highlights, um, we have twenty-two new businesses that were established. Our average com- commercial occupancy rate is ninety-eight percent. And in two thousand twenty-four, we had over thirty-nine million, um, dollars in commercial investment. In two thousand twenty-four, we also secured a four-point-five-million-dollar grant for Connecticut communities through the Department of Economic and Community Development. And we finalized acquisition of twenty, twenty-one and twenty-three Trailbridge Drive, which would generate over one million of that revenue as well as property taxes. And currently, we have two offers we're working through, the nineteen Trailbridge, which would complete that expansion and the sale of those properties. We completed the downtown Bethel Mobility, Lockability and Parking Improvement Plan. We developed and finalized a comprehensive marketing plan. And we were applied and were accepted to the Main Street Accelerator Program, which will provide specific marketing support to our downtown businesses. In terms of the two thousand twenty-five budget, um, we have an increase of three-point-three-two percent, which is a salary and dues and education increase. Um, we did do a reduction in mileage. Um, previous to last year, I didn't have a budget, so I never charged back for mileage for the town. Um, so this was the first year I actually did it and thanks to.
Did you save your receipts or no?
Do, this year, I did. In previous years now, for the past ten years now, I never charged for mileage or a lot of the expenses, um, that came with the position. Um, so this year, um, I'm looking for fifteen hundred for dues and education, which is a five-hundred-and-fifty dollar increase from last year. Um, we're looking to join the Connecticut Main Street Program, which offers a lot of programming and, um, marketing and educational opportunities to our down- downtown businesses. Um, like I said, I reduce the mileage and everything else. I'm going to stay the same. So, any questions?
Well, I, I just have one thing. I mean, you blew right past that park expansion. Great job. I, I, I thought they were going to sit there and we're going to cut the grass for ten years. So, great work. Appreciate it.
What are they going to, what do you think they're going to start opening there? I drive down there to see if they start a thing.
Yeah, one is in the, in, uh, they actually just got their plans approved. That was twenty Trailbridge Drive, so they should be starting in the spring. Um, the other two, I don't have a determination yet. They're still working on their plans. And nineteen, um, if we can come to an agreement, they would probably start in the spring as well.
So you have two offers on them?
We have two offers, yeah.
We just closed on twenty. This week. Really this week?
Yeah, we closed on twenty and then at the end of last year, we closed on twenty-one and twenty-three.
And I have to know that you're responsible for bringing Dog Town. Everyone was very excited that Dog Town's coming. Everyone loves a hot dog. I've heard that from everyone.
Yeah, they were actually interesting because they came two years ago looking to do a, uh, food truck, a, a dog food truck. And so then they decided not to go that route, but they could come back and they're opening up.
Yeah, I saw that.
And I, I will add, I mean, it's, it's important from, you know, before this was under the First Selectman's Office. Um, the truth is that Janice operates very much on her own in many ways and she works with us, the First Selectman's Office, other offices, planning zoning, uh, but also economic development. And, you know, there's no question that she is really the main liaison between any business or anything happening in town. Um, and, yeah, you're doing the fun stuff like, you know, Bethel Arts and all that, but that actually adds a lot to the town as well. So it's appreciated.
Yeah.
But you got a lot of complimentary comments about it.
No. Well, and the arts is a big part of economic development and usually people don't take that into consideration. So that was definitely what I needed to do when I started the position. Right. Thank you.
Great.
Turn it back to the right, right? Yeah, that was the best.
I don't know the others there.
Billy was close, but that was fast.
We have.
Are we, are we going?
I thought you were saying like five minutes break.
Yeah, say, let's say.
Forty-five minutes to an hour, so if you want a break.
Let's say a five-minute, yeah. So long. So basically, we, we have. Okay. We, we have a, we have a motion from First Selectman, excuse me, Selectman Thursday. I'm second. All favor of ten-minute recess or five minutes, five minutes?
Five minutes.
Five-minute recess?
Do I have a motion?
I'm second. Yep, all in favor.
All right, thanks. We, uh, we stand at recess. It's, uh, nine oh four PM, back in five. Mary, if you could, um, walk it off, seriously, I'm worried about you. I'm worried about you.
Let the record show, we're back at nine oh eight. All right, Mr. Brad, I'm sorry, Dan, did you want to start with that?
Uh, we should, we should, let's back, back for recess at nine ten PM.
Go ahead. So the, the rest of them, I'm going to go through with a little assist. We'll have Jack come up when we get to information technology. Uh, Selectman account, we kept everything flat, other salaries. Um, the second and David Selectman are set by the Board of Finance, First Selectman's set by the Board of Finance. Uh, right now, unlike in the registered and top clerk, there's no request for increases in there. Um, but that's up to the Board of Finance. And then the full-time employee, uh, human resources, everybody else is non-union. So that, those are the, the actual salaries right now. Um.
But you're carrying and you continue to?
In wage adjustment account. Any questions on Selectman account? I want to. So there's two full-time employees, there's three D, part-time employees and the two Selectmen. One of those first, First Selectman's one of those full-time employees. Full-time employee, full-time employee, human resources is part-time, benefit coordinator is part-time and what's Emma, she's.
She's doing grant funding.
Yeah.
Very well.
Yeah.
By the way, she bring it in the though.
Okay.
Sometimes we just look at what the expenses and then the benefits.
Sure. Um, Treasure is same fifty-five hundred, it's only, it's set by the Board of Finance. Any question? What are the responsibilities? So the responsibilities of the Treasure set in Charter, um, he's in charge of when we issue new debt. I know it comes in every week and reviews all of our A P invoices that go out. Um, he's supposed to be, he does a lot of our investment stuff, so that's more of a we consult with them when we make changes. Um, it's all laid out in the Charter. Uh, the biggest things we do right now with our Treasure, this one and prior ones are, he's highly involved when they issue debt. Yes, the one of the signers when we issue debt, when we begin to refinance, um, he had to come in and sign with those. Any reviews are weekly spent on our accounts.
It's been like a third of order.
You have to make a motion tonight.
We're rich to do all that.
No, no, I know. I call it process.
Don't waste your potion right now.
All right. So anything else on Treasure?
No.
Um, Controller's Department, there's really two things driving this. Uh, I'll start with the auditing, the auditing of ten percent. Um, they're going to look for a five percent increase. I haven't asked yet. This keeps going up based on what the actual spend is. So there's a contractual spend and then the amount that's actually billed for the audit work. Um, some of it is, it keeps increasing because, um, Gatsby laws keep changing, so it changes how much work they have to do. Um, depending on how much federal and state money we get, increases how much the audit's done, how much it all costs. Um, the Controller's Office pays for the audit. Um, water and sewer pay a portion of it, so you don't see that. So the actual audit costs more than this number. Um, we don't allocate out, they do a little bit of work for the railroad, they do a little bit of work for the old railroad, they do. We don't allocate those like thirty bucks, fifty bucks. We don't do a percentage on those. Um, and the biggest piece of this, each area in our budget is the Board of Ed. Is the cost to do the audit for the town and Board of Ed is all in the Controller's budget. Um, honestly, they probably spend sixty to eighty percent, sixty to seventy-five percent of their time doing Board of Ed because, uh, the special requirements related to the Board of Ed, they have to audit their E D O one. Um, the Board of Ed has, the budget's a lot bigger than ours too. Um, so they have more accounts, they have more special funds. Um, it's fully carried here. It's always been fully carried here. We do, when you look at the cost per pupil that the Board of Ed puts out, um, the Board of Ed carries on that cost per pupil. Um, an allocation for the audit, but we actually pay it. It's just allocated, but that's just for the state and the cost per pupil. Um, not to go into the weeds, but there, they pay, they, we get, they get allocated, they don't pay, parts of building maintenance, parking racks. So all those factors go into their cost per pupil, but it's actually sits in the town budget. Um, the salary line's a big increase. We have one employee who's on step. And we have one of those union employees, um, we had a a grievance that was settled. Um, just a little backstory, the Finance Department has four full-time people, myself, Sammy, the assistant, our purchasing agent and payroll person. Um, when I became Controller, three years ago, we had five people. Part of that settlement was due to the fact that when we went from five people to four people, we reallocated that fifth person's work. The union didn't really like it. I understand their point. It costs us a little bit of money. The union didn't really like it, I understand their point, it costs us a little bit of money. But at the end of the day, we have one less person, one less person on benefits. Uh, and we did what was right by the town because the way the workload shifted post-COVID. Um, the Controller's Office didn't need five people. I wasn't gonna carry five people just because I don't ever wanna have to come back and ask for fifth, but I don't think I'm going to. So I know how hard that would be to get a fifth person again if we ever need it. Um, Nick Sorry told me no, just with his eyes, but it was a hard decision to reduce it, but it did end up costing us because the union agreed. Agreed, so, um.
You're still doing payroll in the house too, right?
Yes, payroll's done in the house.
I'm sorry, Sebby.
Currently Sebby's doing it, she did it today, she finished it. Good job then. Office expense went up, disposal goes up. We mail out all the A P checks. Every week we do an A P run. Um, and some of the payroll checks, but most of those are handed out. Uh, any questions on the Controller's Office? So the personally agent does, um, purchasing, the bidding, they also are ha- highly involved in the A P process. Um, any bills that aren't coded by a department, that like our resource bills are all the ones that we overs, kind of oversee. Um, they code them, they answer the invoices, they cut the A P check run. Um, and that's kind of where some of that work, we used to have a person that did A P and accounts receivable, plus a purchasing agent. Um, during COVID, we made the department heads code a lot more of their own bills. So, which makes it dirty because they're responsible for their budgets. So the workload kind of shifted, but when it shifted, we shifted some of the work that the A P person did that no longer is an employee, no longer slot. We have plenty of purchasing agent. So because the workload increased, we had to increase the salary.
Uh, their job is to go out and compare prices.
Yep.
Save a ton of the money by getting, you know, the best price.
Yep.
Um, and then later on, as years go by, we're buying and pulling the towns sharing resources. Um, just what like, you know, did the need decrease, but you're telling me the workload of a perceived.
So some of that's changed over time, like, time's gone, but the internet's made it a lot easier to get free prices on things. So some of the workload was coming down from that standpoint, and that made it available for us to shift some of the other work. So that's why we were able to do it. It's part of the reason we were able to go to four people. So.
Used to go in the right direction.
Um, next stop is legal, ten one sixteen. Uh, there's two increases in professional. So there's two things driving this budget up to nineteen percent. Um, one, we have three union contracts up this year. The clerical union, the office workers, the police contract, and the library union are all up. Um, so our contract negotiator line, uh, that varies based on how many contracts we have, have up. Um, so that's a thirty thousand dollar increase. A couple of years ago, when we had a couple up, it was budgeted for fifty thousand. When we could drop it, we dropped it. Um, legal fees, if you look at the prior year actual, we spent three hundred and thirty thousand. On the second page, I give a breakdown of what we spent in legal, that legal fees line going back to twenty eleven. Uh, the ten-year average is two fifty-one, but ten years is a long time, but I supplied anyway. Uh, five-year average, two sixty-one, three-year average, three oh three. Um, honestly, the two ninety's probably not enough, depending on the year. But it's a step in the right direction. Last year, I think we went from two thirty to two sixty. I'm pretty sure I'll be sitting here a year from now, if it doesn't get reduced, asking for three twenty. And the year after that, hopefully, we're asking for ten thousand dollars more. We're trying to play catch-up without having big jumps. Um, I know Bob would rather us just go right to what we need. I understand that philosophy. Um, but we try to, we try to do what we can and try to get it to where it needs to be. Uh, and honestly, we don't know. If you look at twenty, twenty twenty-two is two oh four, twenty twenty-one is two ninety, but then you got a three seventy-two and a three seventy-nine in there. Um, so we're hoping the two ninety is plenty, but that hasn't really proven out to be the case in other years. Uh, so. Any questions on professional services? Uh, probate court, um, six point six percent, ridiculous, I can't believe I went up that much, five hundred dollars. Uh, Newtown, Newtown Reading and Ridgefield pay a portion of it. It's based on an old calculation of what percentage they pay, based on, I forget offhand, it's in our calculation. Um, we house it, so every June I bill the other three. Um, they always get mad at me when I tell them what percentage I'm putting it up, and I go, it's five hundred dollars, and they'll pay whatever it is. Um, so, and it just, the cost of supplies always go up. Um, and it gets us closer. The prior year act, twenty twenty-four was seventy-seven hundred. So that's part of it too.
How did we get that? Was there an argument to get that, or it just made sense?
From my understanding is, somebody didn't want it. I think Ridgefield didn't want it, but they didn't want Newtown to have it because it's too far away.
And it fell in our lap.
And it fell in our lap.
We've made this in Minnesota center too. We had space, I mean, they sold the whole package.
Yeah, but my understanding is the politics behind it is Ridgefield didn't wanna go to Newtown and didn't wanna have it in-house.
John's getting older, just nice to be in town. Now, when you do a regional model, it's good to be in the middle.
So.
Different judge of proof, it's sort of retiring, so we're.
Yeah, but he had to run for it, so that wasn't a matter.
Yeah, that was.
So.
So the ones who made the decisions like three of the fours were not for election.
Yeah, so. Uh, any questions left for me? I'm gonna invite Jack up, Jack Race.
Jack's a new face, no?
He is. So Jack, uh, is the network administrator for the town of Ethel. Um, so Hillis, are there any technical questions that we have? I know you guys wanna get into the nitty-gritty of our network.
We're not going in the weeds with those air packs and the gas, the eye frames, we're not going.
I'm still waiting to figure that out. Um, so the salary line is down a thousand dollars, some of it is. Um, this line is budgeted for two people. We currently have one. Um, when our former network administrator left, Jack was in the second role. Um, he got promoted. We didn't want him to have to learn his new role, plus have to train. Because the secondary position, we got lucky that Jack had more experience or more knowledge than we normally get, but it's more of an entry-level I T position. So to try to bring somebody on, while Jack's learning his additional responsibilities. Um, we're currently discussing how to handle this best going forward. We're not proposing that at this time. Um, we're looking at how the best use it, to be honest with you. Um, it's kind of like the conversation we had when we initially didn't fill the position in my office. We left the budget for a year until we really figured it out. Because we don't wanna dive it down, have to dive it back up. Um, so.
We, let me add something, because we also, we did use some of that money to keep the former I T manager involved with Jack, as almost a consultant. Uh, a certain amount per year that he can go lead on. Because it was interesting, because he came in, like I said, at a level where he might not have been ready to totally take over on his own, but we also didn't wanna bring somebody in because we knew he would be there soon, and we saw the value in keeping Jack. So we had basically the previous guy dead, or less consulting. But now we're, we're to the point where we still need some of the basic functions under that, which is what we're trying to, okay, then we'll come up with a good plan.
At some point, Jack's probably gonna wanna take a vacation. We need somebody here to like be in the building to deal with stuff.
Jack, I don't know if you have an agent, yes, yeah, but Lisa will.
So then on contracted services, so Jack and I went through all the vendors we had. So, um, probably about ten years ago, all the department used to have their I T costs in their individual budgets. Um, and Bob Fazowski consolidated it all in the I T, just to make it easier to track and to see where there could be savings by. You could have redundancies of, if you have the same vendor, you might get a better price if you need five licenses instead of just five individual ones. Um, so we went through and listed everything. So you'll see that some of these things are up, five hundred bucks for the tax collector. Um, printer leases and, uh, the M P S is managed print services. That covers toner and maintenance to come out and fix our copiers. Uh, the first due software that Tom mentioned when he was talking about it is in here. Um, it was budgeted forty-five hundred. When they actually got it installed, it turned out to be closer to fifty-five hundred. Um, so that is an increase. Um, every year we need to add, Google goes up a couple bucks. We have over a hundred different email addresses for the town. Um, no before, I think we did that. So a lot of that training stuff. Tyler Technologies is our media support, so that's our backbone of our accounting software. Um, every year they increase that fee that we pay them for support. Um, pretty much they have us, we own the software, but if you don't have support, they're not gonna give you the updates for W twos, ten ninety-nines. If you call them and something in their software doesn't work, they're not gonna answer. Um, but I was talking to somebody earlier today, if the town hadn't bought it fifteen years ago, anybody looking to add mutes now, they're paying like a hundred, hundred and fifty a year, and it's software as a service. So it's a license, it's kind of like what the taser companies are doing. You can't tie it anymore because they're gonna get money from you every year. They get money from us every year, but it's a lot less than it would have been because they haven't kicked us off being on the open. Um, the S H I is who we buy most of our equipment from. Um, the cost of equipment has gone up. Uh, that could be in some years, it's servers, it's desktops, it's any kind of equipment we need for I T. Um, sounds dumb, but every year we need to replace five to ten monitors. Um, you know offhand how many computers are between us and the fire departments and public works. Yeah.
It was eight eighty-two hundred?
So if you think that we probably get five years out of like useful, like before we make it like a kiosk computer, you gotta replace a certain amount of those every year. The monitors last longer, um, but you gotta replace some of them every year.
And this year is kind of annoying because Windows ten is reaching end of life, so Windows eleven is gonna take over in October. There's a lot of computers that are in here that are a little too old for Windows eleven. Um, I've been keeping them alive as long as I can, but they won't be compatible. So that's why there's a five thousand dollar increase, because I need to account for at least ten computers to replace.
Yeah. Uh, we buy those, I think they're all on state good. The other, the negative down here is because the budget goes up, um, we allocate a portion of I T to water and sewer. Um, so it was budgeted thirty, the actual for twenty twenty-four was like thirty-five. So we're just trailing a little bit, so we're getting caught up. Um, so it brings the number down, but it's, it's, so we don't like, if we buy a computer, we don't necessarily charge that off the water and sewer. Jack goes over there, we don't like, oh, that's whatever, an hour times this. It's just water and sewer is part of it. And honestly, thirty-five thousand dollars between the two of them to have an I T department at your disposal is pretty good deal. Uh, any questions on, technically it's data processing because our charter is outdated, um, but I take.
Nope.
I don't wanna embarrass ourselves. I'm not smart enough. I couldn't get YouTube on my TV the other night.
Rich wants to talk about revenue, you know?
Have you asked the, um, charter revision committee to change data processing?
Yes, yeah, it's one of the things. Yeah, um, and it was one of the things in twenty twenty that was gonna hopefully get changed, and then COVID hit and that last charter.
It was under recommendation.
Yeah, that's also in there, so. All right, Jack, you're done, good job.
Yeah, thanks for sticking around all night.
Thank you. So Karen might also make house calls, but that's not relevant. Um, insurance. Um, so Kerma has held our workers' comp flat, which is good news because that could be, that one, we don't have a rate lock on. Um, the property and liability insurance, uh, when last year we entered a new three-year deal with Kerma, they guaranteed to keep the first year flat instead of a three percent increase. And the out, next out two years, they could go up to five percent. They came back at two and a half this year. Um, there's no increase in this line because last year we renegotiated our contract with our insurance broker. Um, that reduced some of our fees. So even comp technically is up a load, if you look at the prior years lower. Um, it's up a little bit, but because we made other reductions, we were able to eat that and stay flat. Um, the property and liability also, we have to do separate insurance for some of our flood. Um, cyber insurance is its own. Um, a number of years ago, Kerma stopped, it used to be included in our Kerma policy cyber insurance, and then cyber
Got pretty big.
Got pretty big, and they said, we're not doing it anymore. So instead of jacking our price way up, they pulled it, um, and we went out and got it separate. Uh, we paid like twenty thousand dollars a year for cyber insurance. Um, so this line, like when we were talking about auditing, this is, covers the whole town. So this is worker compensation for the Board of Ed and town. Uh, water and sewer gets allocated, uh, but this is just the general fund portion of it. So this is the insurance for the entire town, not health insurance, just workers' comp. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, when we went and did the three-year lock last year, uh, one of the members of the Insurance and Pension Commission, uh, Paul, I always put his last name, so I'm not gonna say it. I consulted with him and he said, my people would jump at a zero five and five. So we jumped at it and we locked it in. Thank you. I think it's all the credit, I get all the fat, I get it. Anything else on insurance before we go to boards and commission? We get no credit either, Nick. It'll be this weekly update this week.
We almost closed Monday morning because of the Super Bowl.
Um, you don't have to worry about that. Boards and commission, best one yet.
We can cut that later.
All right, employee benefits. This is one of our big budget drivers this year. We'll talk, uh, utilities is two from now. Right now, this is up four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The biggest driver of that is the all-town employees are on the state partnership plan for health insurance. State partnership plan right now is projecting an eight to ten percent increase. Uh, no, and it's, they were at eight to ten, now they're at ten to twelve. Plus a thank you for being in Fairfield County, we're gonna increase you another two percent, but we're gonna nicely phase it in over two years. So right now, uh, health insurance for town employees is up thirteen percent in the budget. We will get updated numbers in March. We hope for the best, we worry about the worst, but we will have updated numbers before. It might be after deliberations before public hearing. Um, the other big thing that changed in here, which you can see it if you go through like the bottom numbers. Um, retirees hired, depending on which contract, before a certain date, can be on the town health insurance, and they pay a percentage based on the contract beyond that. Um, so this isn't just active, it's also retirees that pay for it. Um, they do cut us a check for their portion of it. Um, most are at twenty-five percent, some are at fifty percent. Um, like I said, every union's a little different. Um, retirees sixty-five and above that are in a Medicare advantage. Retirees sixty-five and above that are in a Medicare Advantage Plan, the Medicare Advantage Plan went up fifty percent. So their portion's going up, our portion's going way up. So that was a nice thank you. The only benefit of it is. The current vendor that increased it. Two years ago, when they switched that vendor had dropped it drastically. So it's kind of what the board of ed is going through with their insurance right now. So was that like, I'm gonna give round numbers. It was at like two hundred and twenty-five dollars per person for the Medicare Advantage two years ago. It switched to the current vendor. It dropped to like one fifty. It dropped down to like one fifty. And then it went up a little bit the next year. And then because the way the contract with that vendor is written, because the state added enough people to it. And it got above like fifteen percent increase or whatever in the people in it. Cause it's all through the state. They were able to then charge whatever they wanted the second year of it. So the second year increase, they went up to like two sixty or something. It's like. Yeah, it's like above two fifty. So in essence, they went to probably where they would have been if they didn't lowball initially to get in. It stinks. We did reap the benefits of it.
For a short time.
For a short period of time. So, and this does. Hold in that like that changes. So the state partnership plan changes July one. This changes January one. So that big increase that we just hit, it is January one. So we gotta carry that whole twenty-five, twenty-six. Plus hope that they corrected it and we're not looking at another big increase. Actually, I think the state's gonna go out the bit again. On the. Health insurance piece for the actives and for the retirees, but that won't take into effect until. We're talking about it next year.
So you're carrying thirteen percent and the rumor is it may get to eleven?
We're hoping it gets to eleven. The state. They don't know because it's all what the clinic claims are. The state comptroller wants to drive it down. What he's gonna be able to actually do on it? I don't know. But he gave a big speech about how we know this is affecting everybody. I'm gonna keep working on it, but I think that would be done. So there'll be an update in March. And then if he could do anything, that would be after. It might be after we set our budget. But at that point, I don't think it would go up. It would only be a benefit if it dropped. Um, but I don't think we'd have, if he did anything to adjust it until after, hopefully after a budget is set. So the next thing we're waiting for is early March, the state's gonna release the next set of numbers, which is supposedly their final.
And you think we'll have time? We're not gonna have time to make that adjustment for the.
People have time to have, make that adjustment. It might happen. The timing of it might be, we might start the public hearing and go. And then we've got new numbers. It's, we know we're gonna reduce this line by this much or not gonna what increase, you know, like. There will be other times that adjusted. My guess is we will get that number in between when the board's delivery and when the public hearing happens.
And that's the same timeline for the board of ed also.
Correct. Yep. And just so you know, so. Every percent that they go down or up at this point is like thirty thousand dollars to the town. Um, I think the board is like eighty-five or something like that.
Board of Ed?
Yeah.
No, it was a hundred and seventy-six.
But that's for two points.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. From thirteen to.
So yeah, so each one's around like for them like eighty-five. So. Hopefully we get really good news in March. I was hoping for good news at the last one and they went up.
Good. Thanks for being positive.
The other new thing in here is unemployment. We never use the budget for unemployment. We self-insure for it. So we have to pay what actually the state pays out. Last year we paid out thirty thousand dollars. Add to the point that every year we seem to pay out something on it. It's probably time to start budgeting for it. So I put in a number of ten. We have no choice to pay it. If the bill comes in. So.
This was an employee that left and the state gave unemployment compensation and we're paying for it.
Correct. Yes.
Because we self-insured.
Yeah, so we do. We had a notice of claim the other day and we're gonna fight it. If somebody is terminated for cause, but if somebody just doesn't. Somebody doesn't make it through training. And it's not necessarily for cause. It's just not a good fit and we get rid of them during probation. We're gonna have to pay unemployment for that, but I'd rather pay unemployment for that and have the right person.
Yeah.
But it's hard, like. One person in this could blow way past ten thousand. So it's. Uh, any other questions on employee benefits?
My question.
Intergovernmental agencies, four oh five. Council of elected officials, they sent us the new rate. It's up three percent. Sweetheart and Heart have requested a five percent increase in each one of those lines.
A suggested tip.
So. They request it. For the most part, usually the boards have gone. Gone with their suggestion. I don't know if those five or I don't know if I remember, five or six years ago, maybe longer ago now. One bad year, the town said, no, thank you. And I don't know if. The bus, if they cut service or anything.
Was there anybody?
We did do it one year. I don't.
Do they know we're facing a nine-point increase on our education side?
I'm not too sure they have studied our budget.
They're um, they're also saying that they're gonna be, they're, they're having increased ridership and increased service. So if we turn around and say, no, well, then maybe we'll just increase service to whatever it was, keep it flat.
The other thing then. At some point. We should probably meet with them. Dan and I were talking about meeting with them. Cause the numbers they supply us for all the runs and passengers is the regional numbers. Cause we were looking at what they sent us and then we pulled up Danbury's budget. And Danbury's budget had the exact same backup that was supplied to us. Obviously different numbers. They pay five times what we pay or six. I think it's uh, between the two, I think they're over a million dollars. But they're a lot bigger than their ridership.
That's a, that's a question. We paying for part of the ridership. That's, we were wondering if it's just cut up somehow. I, I thought we actually had that on account. Maybe not. It's not on account yet.
With my. It's. And then the other, the big increase here is the seventy-five thousand dollars. So if you remember last year. Uh, paramedic was, had been funded at three hundred thousand dollars for a while. One of the things that COVID did is it greatly increased the cost of our paramedic program. For Danbury or New Ban, whatever they call themselves these days. To keep their paramedics, they had to jack their raises way up. So then two years after they did that, they came back to Bethel and said, we lost a lot of money on you. We need to increase the fees that they charge us. So last, the current year that we're in, the three seventy-five that we budgeted for. We should have budgeted four fifty. I talked to Dan and Dan talked to the board of selectmen and what the board of selectmen agreed to do is take seventy-five thousand dollars out of ARPA. So between the three seventy-five and the budget and the seventy-five thousand dollars from ARPA. We funded this to the tune of four fifty for fiscal year twenty-five. ARPA is gone. So now all we did was phase it in, but we did actually increase the actual funding to it for four fifty. And if the board of finance remembers, we did pay down some of the paramedic debt. For the twenty-four year end. So.
What's your debt right now?
Uh, I don't know. I think it was up to like five hundred and it went down to like three hundred. Yeah, I think it's down to about three now.
And I know it's an IOU in a box. Obviously seventy-five thousand, seventy-five thousand, this kind of budget. Is it smart or is it just kicking a can down the road not to fund it that extra seventy-five?
It's kicking a can down the road because next time the Vance comes calling. They're gonna go up again.
Which is something going down.
Yeah. So. My guess is the four fifty is probably underfunding it.
Bigger hole.
Yeah. We're trying to play catch up. And in years that we can. Take a bite of the debt. It makes sense to. But that's where we're at on that. Any questions on that one? My least favorite. Department right now is utilities. So when PIRA, the state agency PIRA. Um, allowed ever source to start charging five cents more for delivery kilowatt hour. That affected the town. The town uses about eight million kilowatts a year. Uh, but some of that is water sewer. So the town side used last year used like six million. This budget caused for us going up to six point five, seems like a big increase. But if you remember, we're putting HVAC, we're putting air conditioning in the high school every year. It seems like our equipment gets older and it uses more kilowatts. So some of this increases, the amount of kilowatts we're using has gone up every year. The other piece is. The initial draft of this budget had this line up seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Three cents of that five cents per kilowatt hour delivery charge. It's supposed to expire in April. So we took two of the cents and had it saying that is gonna expire, but. My fear is once they get used to paying fifteen, somebody gets used to paying fifteen cents per kilowatt hour for delivery. They're gonna find something else to spend it on. But with this number so big. We're taking some risk in here by going. Let's assume it's gonna come down a little bit because there was so much backlash backlash when it went up. The other piece that's driving this is for the last four years. Um, we've been locked in at eight point one five cents per kilowatt hour. That expires. We had a five-year rate lock on it. That expires in December of twenty-five, so halfway through this year. So part of this increase is also, right now, the estimates are. I have an estimate that it's gonna go to eleven cents per kilowatt hour. I am currently actively trying to get bids. To try to lock in those out years. We should get, we got some numbers. Wow, they were ten and a half. They said, well, if you wait a little bit, you might do better. So right now the estimate is between nine and eleven. I'm carrying eleven. If I can lock in below eleven before we set a budget. You're gonna get, we'll, we'll give it back. But it's also all about managing when that happens. The good news in this budget is. Dan and I locked in gasoline and diesel. When the time was right. So we are locked in for this full fiscal year. And it didn't go down by a lot, but it went down enough to go down by fifty thirty, fifty-three thousand dollars. So it's not all due to gloom. And the other piece of it in that state's wisdom is there's also. Fifty-eight thousand dollars increase in here because, well, it's not ready to stay yet. I can't blame the state yet. Ever Source for natural gas delivery, because we're locked in for natural gas through December. We're looking to lock in the out here too, but we're waiting till the markets right. Is asking for an increase for delivery. It's very complicated based on if it's residential, commercial, whatever. So Sebby went through. And listed out what each one was and then we budgeted. So. If that hits us, which we won't find out, it's supposed to go into effect November first. Here is supposed to decide this uh, October twenty-fifth is when they're supposed to make their ruling. So we're carrying fifty-eight thousand dollars in here thinking that they're gonna approve that. And that we won't know between then and now, but I can't. If I lower that number, I'm carrying risk here. I'm carrying risk in the ever source delivery. There's just a lot of risk in there. But I don't want to set the mill rate higher than we need to. Cause technically some of this stuff is supposed to expire. But it's, we've, Dan and I have gone back and forth a lot on what this number should be. I'm hoping that this number is high because things fall right, but that has not been the recent trend. Every time I call, then he goes, what happened now?
Skystorm.
Yeah. Streetlights went up a lot. Same thing. It's delivery and it's, we're only locked in through December. So it's. A huge percentage increase, thirty-seven percent. It's because it's all electric. There's nothing else in here that's somewhat flat. Any questions on utilities?
There's one little plug I want to put out there. For the, for the water hydrants, still budgeting seventy thousand. I haven't actually asked about it. I do have a meeting coming up with the regional water authorities purchased aquarium. A lot of their prices have been a little higher. So I'll be honest, at the end of the year, when they close on this deal, I wouldn't be surprised before the end of this budget, we get a small increase. Hopefully it's not substantial. It's just going to set your thousand, but I, I would see that coming up.
And the other thing that's in here is. Pound water and sewer usage. The DUC increased the water rates eight and a half percent a year. So it's a four and a half, four point two five percent increase because sewer is black. So roughly half the bill sewer, half the bill is water. So that's part of that.
I want to just look at that this year.
So we talked about it. Two meetings ago. Of if it makes sense to keep it at, if we need to adjust it. So we have talked about it. We're gonna continue to talk about it at DUC. Right now, we don't have enough data really. Because even though it's been a year since the board said it, billing wise, it's only been like six months. And then we had all the MOUs and all that. Not MOUs, MCU, whatever the. Little battery tag. A lot of them have been replaced.
Most of them have. I think we've got maybe a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty right now. It's great because we're trying to fix.
We'll talk about that there.
Oh, yeah. We'll talk about it again.
Miscellaneous charges and transfers.
By the way, we had. What, what seventeen hundred? Yeah, last year. So we know that we're getting there.
Uh, miscellaneous charges and services contingency, town hall expense, capital non-return. We all, I, we kept flat. The big increase here is wage adjustment. It's. But this, we had three contracts. Well, one of the contracts is in here. The library carries their own. So this increases, last year was strictly non-union. It's coming here. It's non-union. It's clerical union and it's police. You could guess probably what's the lion's share of the two ninety-eight. Which one of those? It's the biggest. None of it. Any questions on that?
You have to budget it. It's gonna bury a hole.
Um, debt service. Maybe my favorite one. All right. Debt service. Debt service is down two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. For the things that are driving this. It's down a hundred thousand of that or so is the um, the refinance that we did. That's part of it. The other part, if you turn to the page two with the chart. When we finished the school audit for the Rockwell and Johnson. Uh, the state, the retainage was one point three million dollars that was sent to us. Some of that, when the audit is done for that, the local audit is done. Some of that will still get assigned to the original project. Anything left will go to the debt service fund. Uh, because all that money's been bonded, it's been spent, reimbursed. So. I'm projecting an increase to the debt service fund. In twenty twenty-five of a million dollars. Honestly, it's probably gonna be higher than that, but trying to be conservative about that. With that, the original plan, which was um, called for us using a hundred eighty-three thousand. Eight hundred and fifty dollars of the debt service fund this year. We, I bumped it up to two eighty-three. We have that hundred, we have that extra million dollars coming into it. Even with this, if the million is correct going in there, twenty twenty-nine, the debt service fund would have one point four million dollars in it. I felt comfortable in taking in a bad year. Taking another hundred thousand of that debt service fund, uh, like we did last year too, um, because we knew that audit money was coming. To reduce it. Somebody might ask me, why aren't you taking more of it? Because we're just gonna make ourselves a hole for the future years. So it's kind of trying to balance. If you look at the chart, fiscal year twenty-six. Our debt naturally is dropping off some this year. And our budget, and it's going down, but I don't, it's not dropping drastically. So I don't want artificially drop it drastically. And then two years from now, have a five hundred thousand dollar increase when it's just been our existing debt. So trying to be. Conservative with it, but also give back where we can to the taxpayers. Any questions on debt?
No questions.
No questions. Thanks, Tom, for breaking. Thanks for pushing through that. Right. Um, I know we have the comptroller report, so let me go through that and then you.
Do you wanna go through it or do you wanna just, everybody has it if they have any questions, they can email me.
Let's make a note that everybody has the comptroller's report in their hand.
It's up to you, I just know it's late and people would rather get.
Do you want to do that report?
Yeah, so for the, uh, for the Board of Selectmen, we have, uh, two points to consider, uh, very quickly and I'll just make the motion. Uh, first I move to appoint Melissa Romont, Republican, to the Library Board of Directors for term ending January first, two thousand twenty-nine, in seat ten. Okay, real quick, uh, huge library fan, perfect for the job, I caught her today. I definitely think we should push her on. Any questions or debate on that? With that, I'll try my minds, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Uh, next up, I move that we appoint Krista Swanson-Foreney to the Sustainable Bethel Ad hoc Commission, uh, in seat number three, Mary, I'll have that for you. Okay, so, uh, she, uh, originally had some interest in public site building and she had some, uh, stuff with Parkinum years ago, but she's actually a member of the garden club and does a lot of work around town. She's perfect for the job for sustainable. She's an affiliate voter. Um, definitely recommend we appoint her. Any, uh, any questions or debate? With that, I'll try my minds, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. That's it.
Mary, I'll go a little slower. I would, uh, uh, accept the motion to adjourn.
So move.
And that's Will that did it. Who seconded it? James seconded it. All in favor? Let Iker show it to you, Dan was.
Second. All in favor? Aye. We stand adjourned at, uh, scientifically.
Thank you, everyone.
Do you think Megan gets the award?
Yeah, yeah, she stuck it right out.
All the time.